It is August 27th, it is 5:30 PM. We have a full dais. We will be going into executive session to discuss the following things. Item 2A, City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.074 to discuss the scope and authority of the Director of Public Safety with the City Manager. And item 2B, City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 to confer with City Attorney to receive legal guidance on and provide direction regarding the drafting of a policy for future City Council consideration of proposed proclamations and resolutions. It is 5:32 and we are in executive session. We will start our regular meeting at 6:30 as posted on our agenda. Thank you. It is 6:33, we are reconvening out of executive session and we do have an action that we are going to take on item 2B. I'm going to reread item 2B for the record. City Council, we did convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 to confer with the City Attorney to receive legal guidance on and provide direction regarding the drafting of a policy for future City Council consideration of proposed proclamations and resolutions. Council has asked that the City Attorney share his advice publicly and then we'll be, Alan, our process will be, will adopt a resolution or when you read it, we can, that is reading it into the record?
What I would ask Council to do at this point to effectuate their will is after I read it, if you would like it to be part of your rules of procedure for City Council, so make a motion to amend the rules of procedure with this language in it and it will be added as provided to you.
Thank you, City Attorney.
And the rule of procedure that will be added is that proclamations and resolutions will not come forward for City Council discussion or action, that A, take a position on a matter of religious or spiritual values or principles, including ones that advance one religion, denomination, or article of faith over another. B, promote political partisanship in favor of one party over another. C, advocates in legal matters in which the city of Bastrop is not a party and are pending before a court or administrative law body such as the State Office of Hearing Examiners. Or D, is contrary to a policy position stated in an ordinance previously adopted by the City Council unless the Council is in the process of amending or repealing that prior ordinance.
Thank you, City Manager. Council, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I move to place that to approve these procedures and put them into the rules of procedure.
One second. I have a motion from Councilmember Ennis, I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? City Manager, can we print that on a piece of paper? And Ms. Franklin, we just got our books printed. We can, you know, tape them into the next book or something, but we ought to have a way of, for sure, making, we want to make sure that Council and all boards and commissions and that those sort of folks have a copy of that. Ms. Franklin, how many of those books did you have printed?
I had 100 printed.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, we'll do that. Okay, thank you. All right. Any further discussion or comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. We are moving on and calling to order our regular session. It is 6:37 and we are now in regular session. And tonight, we are very privileged to have, where'd she go? She, where's Sheila and Perry?
There.
Oh, there you are. You're hiding. Perry's trying to hide from me. Come on up, Perry. Come on up, Ms. Low. So, most of you know Sheila because, y'all have to turn around and face the audience, that's what I make everyone do, because I'm going to talk about you. Sheila is the, takes care of our Bastrop County Long Term Recovery and so there, Sheila's the person that's kind of like the doctor you don't ever want to go to, but when you want to go, Sheila is the person you want to see because she's going to take care of you and point you in the right direction and has done a fabulous job for our county. This is her sweet daughter Perry, who is in 7th grade and whose favorite subject is science, so she's become my new favorite friend. And we enjoy the fact that they are going to lead us in both of our pledges. If everyone will please rise, we will say the pledge to the United States flag first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Perry didn't know she was going to have to do this and we appreciate her doing that, so let's give her a round of applause. If you will please remain standing, Reverend Matt Stone, who is the new rector at Calvary Episcopal Church, will be offering our invocation tonight. Rob Stone?
Our presiding Bishop, Michael Curry, has described us as the Episcopal branch of the Jesus Movement. We're deeply shaped by Scripture but also by our Book of Common Prayer, so I'll offer two prayers tonight from this text that is so meaningful for us. Let us pray. Lord, make us instruments of your peace. Where there is hatred, let us sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is discord, union. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, ever joy. Grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen. Almighty God, send down upon those who hold office in this city the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. It with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. Amen.
Thank you, you may be seated. It's important for everyone to know that Father Matt came to Bastrop, he got a new job, a new house, and had a new baby. So, this man, when he does things, he goes all in. So, welcome to Bastrop, we are thrilled to have you. So, moving right along, we are on item 7A, the Mayor's Report. And I don't have my Mayor's Report with me. Let's go, Colin. So, this is the things that I did between July 13th and August 1st, and I just want to draw your attention to two of them. We talked about some of these and they've been a while, but the bottom left-hand corner at the Federal Correctional Institute, they made donations to the Family Crisis Center. And what was so deliberate about that, they've always made donations to the nonprofits and been a great partner, and when the shutdown happened, they had staff that found themselves having to call on the food bank. And so here it was, just a few months later, and they were able to immediately, as soon as they could, start giving back. And so it just really brought home to me how important we are and how we work together as a community. The other picture that's very important is that is Reed Sharp and his granddaughter helping me hold that shovel for Little Sheep Learning Center, and that was her first groundbreaking and she was pretty excited about it, so that was, that was a really fun thing to do. And then off to the right, you'll see some activity at the library and that was welcoming Becca and we, and I went to the summer finale party. So, that was just a few things, and then of course, we already had the conversation about me getting to ride in the Wienermobile on the F1 track, and not everyone can say that they've done that. So, if you go to the next page, the upper left-hand corner, I have photographic proof that my granddaughter was willing to be seen with me, but I had to promise she would be in a parade, so it's important that we acknowledge Ms. Mia. And Council was together, and yes, that's my '57, and yes, that was a birthday present from my husband because he's awesome. So, that's my car and I have a really fun time driving it and I'm waiting for the temperatures to believe, be below 100 because it's hot these days to be riding in that car. Councilmember Rogers wasn't with us because she, you know, has a job and had a million people outside her business and we missed her, but we knew that she was busy. The picture in the middle was announcing the Art Institute coming to town. That was a fantastic day and we are really looking forward to having them. Those kids will start school in next July, June, July, when they're, when classes start. Further to the right, you will see Mayor Pro Tem Nelson and I at the Alive After Five Chamber Benefit, and he told me he was not going to make the sign for the To Infinity and Beyond, but, oh, and then just below that, you will see that we went, I went to the BISD convocation and that was a really great event. Was at Paul Quinn's anniversary two weeks ago and then, Colin, you can go to the next page. I was at Mount Rose Missionary Baptist Church this past Sunday. Been to a bunch of meetings, the Makoko Ribbon Cutting, they've moved out to Community Gardens, so if you didn't make it to the ribbon cutting, you ought to go out there and see them. There's been a million meetings. I've been getting to spend quite a bit of time with the folks on this dais and we're all so thrilled to spend so much time together. We, I was at the New Hope Academy, they had their very first graduation Saturday night. That was a really neat event to be at and we did board and commission interviews last night and we will be finishing those up tomorrow night. The next page, it'll show a few of the things that I'll be working on between now and our next City Council meeting. One thing that's not on here, City Manager, September 9th, I believe, is the joint meeting with Visit Bastrop. Susan, is that, is that booked? So, I, I will probably make the first 15 or 20 minutes of the library board meeting and then I'll be coming to the joint meeting. Labor Day is upon us and the good thing about Labor Day means September's here, October's not far behind, and temperatures will be quite pleasant again if we will just all hang in there. So, that is my Mayor's Report. We're moving on to item 7B. Councilmember Jackson, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Um, not really. I just wanted to say that the Mount Rose Missionary Baptist Church anniversary was the 1/33rd.
Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate the Bastrop Art and Public Places. It's been working hard on our new cultural master plan. They have received it and given some feedback to our, our consultant Lynn Osgood, and that should be coming forth to Council before very long. I would also like to call out the former Chair, or still the Chair, but will be moving off the Board at the end of this term. It's Garnulis, who has worked very hard all the way through this process and has been an excellent leader for BAIPP, and I think he's ready to, to hang it up and get some relaxing time, so I just want to call him out.
Thank you for all the liaison work you've done with that Board. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
I just want to note your enthusiasm for spending so much time with us here on the dais.
Yes, yes. Thoroughly enjoy it. Councilmember Rogers?
Well, for that same point, I don't have a report on Main Street because I was in a meeting with you, so I was, missed that meeting, so I will get your, an update next week.
Thanks, ma'am.
Or the week after that. Maybe tomorrow when I see you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, Reverend Peterson, Mayor, thank you. Everybody that knows me know I'm a car enthusiast and I miss the Corvette Invasion, but they had a very good reason. I think my 35th wedding anniversary, 35th wedding anniversary is more important.
Good call, Councilmember Peterson. Let me just step out there. Good call, good call. That's how you make sure that you'll have a 36th, so. All right. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am. I have two things. A week ago on Monday, I believe it was September 19th, we had a Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District Town Hall meeting at the Convention Center. We have presented a revised service and assessment plan. We have a public input period that is running until the 31st of August and we encourage all of the citizens in Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement Pid, in Hunter's Crossing Pid, to review that plan and if they have any comments, to be sure, and get those to us by the end of the week. The second thing I want to talk about is very exciting because it's the culmination of a year's worth of work. We are in the process of preparing 6,250 notices in relationship to the rezoning process of the adoption of the Bastrop Building Block Code known as B3. It is very exciting because on the 26th of September, Planning and Zoning is going to have a public hearing to review those codes. They will be making recommendations and Council will be holding public hearings on October 8th and 22nd. So, next week, we will be mailing out, did I mention, 6,250 notices. Each parcel will get an individual letter allowing you to understand what changes. Most of our property isn't changing. If you are a single family, you're going to be a single family, we're just calling you something different. So, that constitutes us having to send you a notice, but there's an insert that gives a two-page summary of what building Bastrop is. So, we look forward to the culmination of about a year's worth of work, Mayor, in the very near future.
And thank you to the volunteers who are helping hold those 6,250 inserts. There's been quite an assembly line go in the last couple of days. And when you see the insert, you'll see there is also an email and a phone number there. If you've got questions, for any of the citizens that have questions, there will be avenues to get those questions answered, so I very much appreciate that. Okay, we're moving on to item 7D and I'm going to ask Chief Alkel to come forward. Chief Alkel, we, I'm sorry, we've been in executive session. Is there something you want to say before I read the proclamation or are we only doing the proclamation?
You're going to kind of touch on the September 21st event that you're going to talk about on September 10th in great detail.
Yes, I am, so.
I thought you were.
Really touching it real quick, on September 21st, we're going to have the exhibition at the Shelter talking about Preparedness Month. We're doing that in, in a cooperation and partnership with the Bastrop County Long Term Recovery Association in Bastrop County and the County of, County Office of Emergency Management. Smithville and Elgin have been invited to participate also. We're going to show some, some good things for Preparedness to culminate Preparedness Month, but I'll give a detailed briefing on September 10th.
Okay. And Ms. Low, why don't you come forward as well? I'm going to read it up here and then run down there, so. This makes Colin crazy when I do it, so that's part of the reason why I do it. Okay. Whereas, "National Preparedness Month is a nationwide effort held each September, and whereas the goal of National Preparedness Month is to increase public awareness about the importance of preparing for emergencies and to encourage individuals to take action. And whereas the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, through its Ready Campaign and Citizens Corps Campaign, works with a wide variety of organizations, including local, state, and federal, and, local, state, and federal government agencies and the private sector, to highlight the importance of emergency preparedness and to promote individual involvement through events and activities across the nation. And whereas all Americans need to take some simple steps to prepare for emergencies, including an emergency supply kit, making a family emergency plan, being informed about threats relevant to their community, and getting involved in preparing their communities. And whereas the natural, man-made, and technological emergencies and disasters witnessed nationwide in 2018 illustrate the potential devastation to communities and highlights the importance of preparing, pre-planning disaster response and sheltering operations. Now therefore, I, Connie B. Schrader, do hereby proclaim month of September 2019 as National Preparedness Month." Let's have a round of applause for these folks. I don't dare say it's an odd year and we've almost made it because we, some of us in Bastrop know about odd-numbered years, so it really is, Preparedness is just one of those things that you never regret, having some basic things taken care of and encourage the whole community to come out when we have our event. It will be at the senior center that'll serve as our shelter and it'll be definitely worth your time and effort. So, we are moving on to work session briefings. Item 8A is discuss development-related fees, the recommended fee recovery policy of 75% to 25%, and a hardship process for fee assistance. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So, this is kind of a continued discussion of what we had on the 14th about our fee updates. So, just to recap, we talked about what is staying the same, accommodating permits for use by our citizens, what is our development, what makes that up, the cost of development. We talked about that 75%, 25% allocation and why that's important, and then kind of decoupling of our reviews and permitting process. So, some of the questions that came from that is what does and does not require a permit? What is the cost of a remodel permit? Can you bundle permits? And is there any possible, like, waiver or hardship? And so I think we've come up with some options and I'll get to those here in a little bit. So, to start, permit requirements. What does and does not require a permit? So, maintenance and repair on your home does not require a permit for the most part. So, you can, you know, patch drywall when necessary. If you're reframing a wall, then you need to come and have a conversation with us and get a permit. But if drywall, plumbing fixtures, so if you're replacing a sink, again, as long as you're not messing with the plumbing system, you don't need a permit for that. Flooring, carpet, tile, wood, whatever it is, don't need a permit for that. And most doors, when they're not structural, again, don't need a permit. Now, if you get into flooring decking or you're going to jack up your foundation, again, you need to have a conversation with us. But if you're just doing some maintenance and remodeling, it's not going to require you to come get a permit. So, I just wanted to kind of go through this. And so if you're wanting to update your kitchen, you can do all of these things without having to pull a permit. So, you can replace your cabinets, replace countertops, replace appliances, replace flooring and carpeting, replace your backsplash, and then the sheet rock replacement. Again, you can do all of that without having to come pull a permit. So, you can go from, you know, the before to the after picture without having to come and see us and we think that's a good thing. That allows residents to do some maintenance and some things like that, you know, to keep up with the property, to maintain property values without, you know, having to come in and pull a permit for those repairs. So, what is not changing with the new fees? So, tonight, we're talking about only new fees, and I'll get to that here in a little bit. That's important because of House Bill 3167 and that passed, 3167 and that September 1 deadline. Okay, moving on. So, the new fees and what are those and what are you going to see tonight? So, again...
Let me make sure we're all kind of on the same page.
You're doing 12E.
What?
Yep.
So, essentially, the conversation that this is intended to have is to talk about the development-related fees. And so, part of the conversation that, I want to interject so we don't get confused. What you have in your packet are solely the new fees that have to go into effect before September 1st because they're currently not on our fee schedule. So, that was what was included in your packet. No, ma'am, but it's in your packet.
And under item 12E, that's where you would find it.
In the packet, yes, ma'am. In an effort to be prepared for tonight, we have a set of fees that are going to be focused on solely the maintenance and hardship portion of the conversation that you had last meeting on August 14th that we need to get answered before we can move forward with the fees. What we've handed out is an ordinance that has all of the fees, including the maintenance fees for your consideration. And here's where it's going to get hopefully uncomplicated and uncomplex thanks to a conversation I had today with the City Attorney. Our ordinance requires that we read the caption twice. The caption of the ordinance on August 14th and the caption of any ordinance you're going to pass is the same. So, if we have a conversation tonight and you are comfortable approving the recommended changes that are from the August 14th and incorporating the changes that we've presented to you or will on the maintenance and the hardship, the ordinance that you have lay on the dais does all of that. So, if you wanted to approve it tonight, you could. If you want to wait until September 10th and only adopt the fees we don't have, you can do that too. The reason I have put this on here as an option, one of the House bills that was approved says that you can no longer assess fees based on valuation, and that's currently how we do that. So, we had proposed in our fee structure to go to square footage and we talked about that last time, but there was some confusion as to whether or not those fees would impact our citizens. And so, if you, if, when Matt gets through with his, his presentation and you go, this answered all my questions and this solves the hardship in the maintenance piece and y'all are ready to move on with fees, that's this ordinance right here. So, Matt's having a holistic conversation with you that I needed to interpret because he, he and I have gotten to a different place and we need to bring y'all along with that.
I felt it, I felt the tell story.
And I just realized that Matt had moved on and we must bring you with us when we take this journey. So, the conversation is, we're going to have a conversation about the maintenance and the hardship. If y'all are good with that, then we will move to the new fees.
Yes.
That are in your packet.
Yes.
And then we'll go back and talk about some of the fees that seem to cause you concern because we weren't sure what, who they were impacting, who the end game was. And so we'll break this into bite-sized pieces and see if we can't get to a place where we can approve all of them so we can be in compliance on September 1st.
Thank you, City Manager, for setting the table that I failed to do. But yes, this is kind of a precursor and an all-encompassing of that and 12E. So, these are the, the new fees, what you would not see before in our schedule of fees are what I'm fixing to go through. And so this is not updating a fee, it's not getting more expensive. It was, we did not have one, we need one to be in compliance with the bill, and so that, that's why it's a new fee.
So, so let me translate just a little bit. When we talked about the, the process and we had to decouple and we added steps like the infrastructure plan, the plan, the, the public improvement inspections, the individual drainage plans, we don't currently have fees for those because those are not things we've ever done before. So, these are the steps in the process that we need to acknowledge or new and add to the fee schedule because they don't exist.
They directly correlate with something that was in the process that you looked at last time.
That's right.
So, the completeness check review, for example, we never had a fee for that because we didn't do one, so we're proposing that within that 24-hour review, that that completeness check have a fee associated with it. Public improvement plan review, again, we did not have a fee for that, so we're proposing a fee for that. The same with public improvement inspections. And then the public improvement plan agreement, again, that you all saw last time, again, not a fee for reviewing that, putting it through the process, bringing it to Council, so we propose a fee for that. License to encroach on the easement and right-of-way. We had a generalized license, but we did not have a license to encroach for any easement and or right-of-way, and given the direction of the codes, it's, it's very important to have that fee in there and to have a process for it. So, the preliminary drainage plan, final drainage plan, and infrastructure plan reviews, again, are all directly correlated to the processes that we walked through on the 14th.
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
This isn't in the packet, so is it somewhere else I can read it inside that screen?
Yeah, so the handout you have, these are all the items highlighted in yellow.
Right. That's...
Okay.
I was about to ask...
So, these new fees are highlighted in that document that was handed out in yellow.
My question was, so the ones that are highlighted are the new fees?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
That are shaded on the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
The other ones were what was in your packet, correct? And is what was discussed, but the ones in yellow are the new fees that correlate to the processes that we spoke about on the 14th.
Or on the hand, on the overhead, the shaded ones?
Yes, so I'll get to those too. And these fees also take into consideration the conversations that we had on the 14th.
Hang on just a second, Ms. J. The reason they're not yellow, Doc, is because only the yellow ones are up there.
Yes.
What you're looking at has yellow new ones and existing ones. What he's showing you is only the yellow ones.
That's correct.
That's why they're not yellow, because they would all be yellow.
Okay.
Okay? So, he's, he's condensed it and that's a way to look at all of them, but if you're trying to follow along on the paper, you're, he's going from one yellow line to the next yellow line.
Yes.
There is no way to take about 200 fees we have to update and make this easy. Yeah, we tried.
So, please stop me if you have any questions. That way, we make sure we're communicating. But those, so yes, if you're following along on the handout, I'll be jumping from yellow to yellow to yellow because those are the new fees. This is site development. Again, we did not have site development plan fee or site development plan revision fee or the inspection fee.
And it is important to appreciate that we started this journey by determining the cost of development.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, that cost of development is a million...
Million eighty-five.
A million eighty-five. So, that's all of planning and zoning, that's all of engineering, that is a portion of public works and electric. It's fire, fire inspection. It's my time. It's fire, fire inspection, it's my time. So, we looked at the cost of development and then allocated it to these specific fees based on the amount of time we believe it will take to go through the system, and we only allocated the salaries of the people that will actually look at them. So, this fee is a site development plan that a small part of our development team will review. So, if you see a fee, and it might be five hundred dollars or two hundred dollars, and the next fee might be fifteen hundred dollars, the more expensive it is, the more of us that we touch.
So, I just, I want to clarify because I know what you meant, but I also heard your words. It's not all of your salary, it is a percentage of the time that you spend on the development.
Yes.
And same thing with Mr. Jones, and because people have many jobs, but you tried to cull together the cost of development.
Yeah.
That's right.
The cost, the impact of personnel to development.
Broke it down to man-hours. How many man-hours does it take to move through that process? Then broke out each member of the development team. There is obviously a per-hour cost to that, and then we, you know, did the math, and this is where we landed.
So, these are real costs?
Yes, ma'am.
We just didn't make up.
They're not fluff, they're hard costs to get development through our system.
So, fully allocated costs, not just a percentage that you figured of the project?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So, the final drainage plan, you'll see that a second time because you might run into that with site development and not just subdivisions, so we wanted to be clear. And then, miscellaneous administration plan review. So, that is something that, if it is not captured, and it is going to require a portion of the development review committee to come together, to meet on it, to process it, we wanted to have a fee for that. So, just in case there was one that was not on there. Then you move to the zoning section, and they're for consent agreements to get a mud established or a public improvement district established, an SUD, a water supply, or a WCID, rather. We put a fee with that. That seems like a very large amount of money. I promise you, it's a very long and taxing process. And to put it in perspective, I think to do the same thing in the city of Austin, I think is ninety-eight thousand dollars. And again, the House bill doesn't care the size of your staff or how much time it takes. We all have to do it the same way, and so that's why we put that fee in here.
Since it's on there, why don't you go ahead and address the professional fees as well?
Sure, yes. So, anytime something has to be outsourced, that would be kind of a pass-through. So, if we have to have one of our engineers review something, that is not a hard cost that we put into those DRC comments. So, anytime you see a professional fee, that's more of a pass-through. So, the citizens, and we're not subsidizing it, we can then turn around and just write an invoice to the developer to reimburse for those fees that we incurred for their application.
So, we depend on the complexity of the progress of the project?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And you might not always have it. But in case we did, we wanted to have the ability.
And if you do, then we would just pass through. If we had to hire a geotechnical specialist or something, then...
Yes, ma'am.
They would be aware of that from the beginning, and we would pass that cost through.
A really good example is we got a set of bridge plans for a subdivision that's going in, and we don't have any structural engineers. So, the complexity of that required us to outsource that to Himley Horn and have Brian LaFoy look at it.
Okay, so, this is kind of moving into the vertical construction. So, we did add an administrative, administration fee on applications. Some of them are not included in that, and I'll get, I'll touch on those here in a second. But that is to cover the cost of emails, phone calls, meetings, things...
Finance.
Finance, all the other departments. There's some admin fee in there for City Manager's office and others for the different fees and applications that we take in. And again, it's exempt on some of them, more the ones that the residents pay and the maintenance ones, but I'll get to that in a second. We also discussed, last time, the hardship application. So, we had a discussion amongst staff and kind of came to the consensus that maybe appropriate way to do that is an emergency repair. So, if it's a true emergency repair to your dwelling, to anything, we would reduce that permit fee by fifty percent in order to help that. And that would be like a natural disaster, hail, you know, wind, flood, any natural disaster and/or, you know, sometimes mechanical failures.
Fire.
Fire, electrical wire goes down in a thunderstorm and pulls your meter box off, those fees, all types of that. And again, that would be verified by the building official. You know, so if you flooded, clearly, there's going to be some visual residue or leftover or something that will indicate that that's the case. And so, it's just going to be verified by the building official. The new construction for residential permits, this is what the city manager keyed on that we spoke about that is now a mandate of that House legislation. So, we can no longer ask what the permit value is or the construction value is for single-family residential. So, in lieu of doing that, we had to come up with a way that met the bill that we could still charge a fee. So, we came up, we also wanted this to kind of be stacked or staggered. So, the smaller you build, the cheaper it is. So, the cost is reflective of the size of the plans you review, et cetera, et cetera. So, we broke it down, and leaning towards the building backdrop codes, if you're under nine hundred square feet, so a house or an accessory dwelling unit, that fee is going to be six hundred and fifty dollars bundled, if you want to call it bundled, to use our term from last time. So, that's all your trade permits.
Let me say it a different way. You will pay six hundred and fifty dollars to the city, and you are done.
You're done.
Now, does that include their technology fee and their administration fee?
Yes. That's an add-on. But as far as the trade permits, where we would typically charge you a permit fee, and then you pay for the trade inspections, if you're less than nine hundred dollars, all of that is included.
Nine hundred square feet.
Huh?
Square feet.
Nine hundred square feet, that's correct.
Nine hundred square feet, all of that's included.
So, they'd be six fifty plus the five percent...
Plus the six dollars.
Plus six dollars. And that would be, that's what it's going to cost.
Out the door.
And then, the only time it would be more than that is if we send somebody out to do an electrical inspection, and it fails, or they're not done, then they would be charged a re-inspection fee.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Because we're having to send somebody back out there.
That's correct. Yes.
So, the bundling assumes that you're calling for inspections because you're ready to inspect, and it's right. So, if it fails, that's an additional something was not anticipated in the bundled rate. So, part of what y'all charged us was, I use the analogy of Southwest, we're not tacking on fees. You're flying Southwest, two bags included in your fee. That's what the six hundred and fifty dollars is. It's all there, no surprises, here's what it is.
When I was speaking with staff, council, one of the phrases that I had heard from a couple of the council members was, "We're nickel-and-dime people to death." And it's the, "And another permit, and another permit." So, we're trying to simplify it and make it a one-stop-shop kind of thing.
And I think this is important because the nine hundred square feet, it's intended to encourage a mix of houses, but also includes like accessory dwelling units. So, again, that's somebody who already lives here, who's just wanting to put an ADU in their backyard, so we wanted to make that easier for them. The next three tiers are going to be more associated towards a developer or a home builder, and so, the trade permits are not included in those because we didn't feel like, you know, residents should or needed to subsidize a new construction for a home builder. So, from nine hundred and one square feet up to fifteen hundred would be a twelve hundred dollar permit fee, plus twenty-five feet per square foot.
Twenty-five cents.
Yes, thank you, twenty-five cents per square foot. Fifteen hundred square feet to four thousand nine hundred and ninety square feet would be fifteen hundred dollars plus twenty-five cents per square foot. And then, greater than five thousand is, would be two thousand dollars plus twenty-five cents per square feet. And then, so, the five thousand is in there because once you get above five thousand, you start messing with fire code. So, there's some additional review and things of that nature. Accessory dwelling unit finish-up. Again, this is one of our Southwest bundles. So, this is intended, if you already have a garage, or you have a shed or something, and you want to convert that into an accessory dwelling unit, finish it out into an accessory dwelling unit, that's five hundred dollars. So, it's not going to be the new single-family residential, it's a finish-up permit. So, that's all your trades, and then it would be the six dollar technology fee and admin fee on top of that. So, again, we thought this was somebody who already lives in town, wanted to make it simple for them, and encourage that type of development. So, another, one of the things that we heard, you know, or that we wanted to do is, in our current fee structure, we don't differentiate between an accessory building and an accessory structure. So, if it's a carport, if it's a patio cover, if it's a pergola, an outdoor chimney, that would all be an accessory building. So, we wanted to break that out, so it's a little less complicated. So, we came up with an accessory structure that's non-habitable. So, that would be your patio covers, pergolas, carports, anything that is not finished air-conditioned space would essentially just be a structure, if you will. And we brought that fee to a seventy-five dollars.
Matt, let me interject here.
Yes.
Prior to this change, we had a hundred and sixty-five square foot limit on this. And this takes the limit off...
Takes the limit off.
And just says, "An accessory structure that's not habitable, a shed, a carport, those types of things, regardless of the square footage, will just be seventy-five dollars." And I think this was causing quite a bit of concern in our community because a hundred and sixty-five square feet is a pretty small carport. So, we have some folks that were replacing carports that were having to pay some expensive fees because we had put a cap of square footage. The cap's coming off, and it's just non-habitable accessory structure of seventy-five dollars.
That's correct.
We think this probably will make the biggest difference to a lot of our citizens.
And I have some slides that will show the difference here in a minute, and I think that'll help clarify some of this.
And just testing for clarity, so I have a house, and a tree falls over, windstorm comes through, whatever, then, and it's non-habitable, then that seventy-five dollars would be cut in half?
That's correct.
Because that would be an emergency.
Thirty-seven fifty, yes, ma'am.
That's correct.
Okay, and there's no admin fee, but there is a technology fee?
Yes, ma'am.
So, it'd be the...
Uh, yes, that's correct. It would be plus six dollars.
So, it'd be half, and then plus the six bucks?
Yeah, so, no admin fee, but it would be the six dollars.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yes, ma'am, so, eighty-one dollars for clarity. Thank you for bringing that up. And then, for accessory buildings, so if you're going to build a workshop in your backyard, or if you're going to have a detached garage or something of that nature, and it's enclosed, it's air-conditioned, it's, you have electrical, you have plumbing, that's a little bit different than a, you know, pergola. So, that's going to be a two hundred dollar fee. Again, you're just, a lot of different trades that go into that. But that would be subject also to the, to the technology fee.
Did that also have the trade fees, like the plumbing and electric?
They're built into that, are they not? Or are they in addition to?
It didn't say either way, so I wasn't sure.
I don't think it's, it's not clear from there. I think the intent was to have that built in.
It is now.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so, another, some of the kind of troubling permits were kind of remodels and how those are handled. So, we went and looked at these and came up with some more bundles, if you will. So, the next three, the residential kitchen remodel, the residential bathroom remodel, and then a miscellaneous residential remodel are all included. Trade fees or trade permit fees are all included in that price. So, there is no admin fee on any three of those, but there is the six dollar technology fee. So, it would go to a hundred and six dollars for a kitchen remodel, it would go to seventy or eighty-one dollars for bathroom and miscellaneous remodel. And that would kick in on a remodel, if you're removing a structural wall, adding a structural wall, moving a gas stove over. So, these are things that trigger the trade permits, but there's no easy way. So, you might have a kitchen remodel that has four trade permits, or you might just have one. So, we're trying to simplify it and catch the majority of them without beating ourselves to death. But again, we wanted to make sure that it was inclusive, and we didn't hit you with all these hidden fees as your contractors come in and pull these separate trade permits. We wanted to make that very clear that those are included as a part of that remodel permit.
And all of that goes back to the impression that you left was, you want to make it easy for our citizens to be able to maintain their properties and maintain the value of those properties because we want them to be able to do some of the remodels, and some of these trade permits, at seventy-five dollars a piece, it gets to be three hundred, four hundred, five hundred dollars. So, that was our takeaway from the fourteenth, is that you want to fix it where our citizens can maintain their properties, and it's not a big deal. And that was the objective we were trying to accomplish.
I'm sorry, I have a question. I know remodel is you're moving a wall or adding a wall inside your kitchen, but would, let's say they added a room onto that, that wouldn't be a separate structure, but it wouldn't actually be a remodel, is that somewhere else?
Added a room?
Like, if they added a bedroom because Grandma's coming?
So, that would be the residential miscellaneous remodel.
It is a remodel, okay. I wasn't sure, because you're not really remodeling, you're actually adding something. So, I wasn't sure where it would fall.
We, I will tell you how I saw it, and the staff can veto me from the podium. Additions are optional. That's not, that's not maintenance. If you're choosing to add on to your house, that's not optional, that's not a hardship, that's a choice.
Right, I just want to...
What y'all said to us was, you didn't want to create a hardship due to cost because people couldn't afford to maintain their house.
I understand, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't... Is it remodel, or is it something, or is it new construction? That's your question. Right, I just wanted to know where, for the public to know where that wasn't remodel, so they would know to look somewhere else in the fees.
So, if you're adding brand-new square footage to your house?
It's new construction.
That's new construction.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody understood that wouldn't...
Yeah, because that affects drainage, it affects a lot of things.
I just want to make sure everybody knew that wasn't really remodeling your house, that's really new construction.
No, that would be an addition and new construction. It's not interior, if it doesn't take place interior to the existing structure, it would be new.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, no problem. So, the next section is the fire fees and inspection fees, and I have those listed out there in that handout, and there's a portion of the PowerPoint where we can get to those. The electric, so this goes back to the emergency electric repair. So, if, again, if a tree falls on a power line, rips out your junction box, and the service provider comes back to you and says, "No, no, no, now you have to upgrade your service," we're going to waive those fees because that's, you know...
It's an emergency.
It's an emergency, in an effort to, you know, help, you know, those people are struggling enough with having to deal with everything. And so, per your direction, we kind of wanted to make that easier, smooth that out, and not penalize them for, you know, something that's out of their control. So, again, we're pulling that out, and for an emergency electrical repair, there would be no fee. And then, we took a look at a few of our trade permits. So, this would be if, for an existing water heater replacement, or a existing HVAC replacement. Again, the admin fee would not apply to these, but the five dollar, or six dollar, rather, technology fee would, so it would be fifty-six dollars on inclusive, and that's actually down from seventy-five. And typically, even though you're replacing it in your home, a licensed professional comes out, you know, with a water heater, you have gas lines, you have electric, you have things that can back up, so you just want to have that inspected. But we recognize that, you know, seventy-five can be a little high, so we try to pull that down into fifty. And again, if it's an emergency situation, you know, it's the middle of the, you know, whatever, and something is ruined, again, that would be reduced by fifty percent in an emergency situation.
I have a question.
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, so, just so I understand, on the water heater, let's say it's Friday night, the water heater goes out, and you guys are closed until Monday. My husband's not going to be upset about paying the fifty dollars, he's going to be upset about taking a cold shower all the way until he can get a permit on Monday.
Yeah.
So, let's say Uncle Joe comes and gives me a new hot water heater from Lowe's, is that going to be, am I going to be in big trouble?
I can't speak to Uncle Joe's performance.
I'm just asking if...
But if we're not open in emergency situations, there's, it allows for the repair to be made and then retroactively get that permit.
Okay, I just want to make sure there was a way to repair your hot water heater over the weekend, and not have to wait.
Or you can tell your husband to take a cold shower if you...
You tell him.
No, I'm just kidding. No, it allows for that in the International Code.
I'll make sure he's probably watching, you're on his list now.
I just told him, sorry. So yes, there is room for that.
Okay.
So those are the new fees. Again, those are the ones that are highlighted in yellow, that was handed out to you at the DIAS this evening. And so I wanted to talk about a little bit about remodel and repair costs, because I know that came up last time.
May I just comment? I mean, I've had my light on, but I just wanted to say that these fees, I mean, I'm so glad that y'all listened to what we spoke about last time. These are remarkable. I can't control my excitement. I think the citizens are gonna really be happy to see these new fees go into effect, and if we adopt them, and I think we will. I mean, it's just, it's remarkable. It's gonna make a big difference in the perception of the citizens, because I've heard a lot about this, and so seeing these come into action is really good.
Good, very glad to hear that, thank you. So tonight, I'll talk about accessory structure and the remodel specifically, the current fee versus the proposed fee. So again, this is just for an accessory structure, non-habitable. I just kind of picked a 250-square-foot patio cover. So the permit fee for you today, if you walked into the front counter, that would be a new construction. The permit fee would be $399.77. You would have an inspection fee of $99.94, for a total fee of $505.71. So that gets calculated by a chart that the International Code Council has put forth, and it assigns a value per square footage. It does not do a good job of separating between uses, so you don't really separate between single-family and accessory structure, you just have single-family or utility. And so there's really no leeway in the system, but that's what you would pay today for a patio cover if you came into the office. The proposed fee, again, non-habitable, 75 bucks, plus your $6, so truth be told, $81, that was the oversight on my part. So the current fee is $505 and change, we're gonna charge you $81, and so you'll save just under $430 on an accessory structure permit. So we thought that that was a really big difference, and could really make an impact on our residents. Current fee for a remodel, again, I just chose a 200-square-foot kitchen model for the basis of running it through our permit. And today, you would pay the $83.73 for the remodel. You would then pay $81 for each of your trades, and at the end of your project, you would have paid $326.78. Again, today, you would, $100 includes your trades with the $6 technology fee, so you run it through, and you would look at a savings after the technology fee of about $220 to the residents. So again, we thought that that was, that that was good, and put us on the right foot, and was the direction you all were leaning from the input we received last meeting. So HVAC and water heater replacement, again, the current fee is $75, and we're gonna look at dropping that to residential to 50. And again, if it's an emergency situation, you would, again, cut that in half. So it would go down to $25. So emergency repairs, we've talked about it, but just to be clear, so if it's an electrical repair due to a down wire or other natural disaster out of your control, there's gonna be no fee charged to the end user for that repair. And then if it's, you know, wind damage, storm damage, flood, you name it, we're gonna give you also a 50% reduction in that permit fee to kind of help you out during those times. Any questions on that, on the emergency? Okay. So new single-family residential, so we talked about it, how we can no longer charge per value, or even ask them the value of the construction. So how are we gonna go about doing that? We looked at the fee schedule, so just to give you an idea, of a $2,500 or $2,500 square foot residence, the permit fee would be $2,200 and some change. You'd be looking at a $555 inspection fee, for a total of $2,782. With our new single-family, based on the schedule that's in front of you, that same permit would go down at an average of $123.92.
But does it have the 5%?
This would have the 5%.
So on top of that number, or that's a number?
So this is, this is both of these. So this one also is not inclusive of trades. So you would have trades on top of that, you would have trades on top of this.
Okay.
You would have the 5% fee, admin fee, and then you would have the $6 technology fee.
On every permit?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, that's fine, I just want us to get used to the numbers.
For clarity, yes, ma'am. So that's what the new fees would look like. Again, anything 900 and under, you know, you got that set fee.
And this is, this is based on cost recovery. This is the time we have invested in new home construction to do a set of plans, get it through our process, inspect it, make sure it will last its useful life.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what it costs us.
That's correct. So fire fees?
There they are.
Did you guys have any things to add to the fire fees? I'll slide them in there.
They'll answer, thanks, guys.
Andreas Disco, don't beat me. He's got that look, "Don't beat me."
Yeah, so the proposed fees, they have not changed, they're the one things that have not changed since the first day you saw them. And again, they're provided for you in your packet on the DIAS. So with that, I'm available for questions. I hope that that made sense once our city manager told the story for us on where we arrived to the new fees that you see, why those new fees were necessary, and kind of the journey we took after giving some direction and an effort to make things a little less cumbersome for our existing residents.
So Matt, of what you passed out, what I think is on page, Trey, are you helping look at what he gave us, so y'all can keep track of notes? What I'm seeing on the bottom of page five, where it says accessory building, $200 no admin fee, I think we said that that includes trade permits, like the accessory dwelling unit at $500. So that seems to be a change to what you handed us. And then on the top of page six, residential kitchen remodel, I think you meant for it to have no admin fee because the other two did?
Yes, ma'am, that was a...
You may have already corrected it, but that's not on my paper, so... Okay, and is, and the technology fee, there's a technology fee, because we gotta keep track of this stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
We've already, I know of an event that happened just this week, that if we knew where all this stuff was, we would have saved everybody some money.
That's correct.
So I don't think it's worth going through and saying, "We're randomly avoiding the technology fee, we gotta, it's GIS, we gotta keep up with it." So is there any other, council, did you see any other changes to the document that was passed out? Councilmember Ennis?
This isn't an answer to your question.
Let's finish that one first, because we're gonna talk about whether or not we're gonna adopt this or not, but I want us to know what we're adopting, if we are going to do the ordinance that's in front of you. Trey, is there anything else that you corrected you want to share with us on this one? That was it? Okay, so those changes on the document in your hand is an option. We can vote on it tonight, or we can vote on it on September 10th. When we get done with this discussion, we're gonna go to 12E, because we're not gonna try to remember in two hours all this stuff about fees. We're gonna vote on 12E, and that will be what's in your packet, and that is just new fees. So that's kind of what's before us. Councilmember Ennis, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, it shows a tremendous amount of work. I think we caught you off-guard last time with our, well, what about this and what about that? And I think you've answered every one of our questions, and you've done a magnificent job of it, you, the rest of the staff, the city manager, and I'm proud of your efforts.
Very much a team effort, thank you.
Ditto.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, I want to thank you guys for doing it in such a timely manner, and only comment I have, I should have waited to make my repairs.
You might check, Ms. Waldron may not have cashed your check yet, so maybe you need to apply for a new permit. Councilmember Rogers?
I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Sure.
On your kitchen remodel, when you were saying, they had, and the trade fees were included? Does it matter how many trades they get? Like if they have a plumbing and an electrical?
No.
They can have them all.
Okay.
It's a flat thing.
Okay, just want to make sure.
The reason that kitchen is a little more than bathroom or other things, is we moved everything in the kitchen from the water pipes, because I want my sink under the window, and it isn't. I've got an electric stove, I don't cook on electric, we're gonna plum for gas. I decided that I needed a window I didn't have, and we were gonna frame, and I didn't like that wall where it was. I mean, we picked everything we could to make Mama happy, and there was a long list of trades. And so rather than make that confusing, which is where we got last time, we just said it would be $100. So that's why it's more than the bathroom or the miscellaneous, because it's the most complicated room in the house.
Oh, I get that, I was just making sure.
Well, and the truth is, there's different levels of remodeling. So if you're doing a kitchen remodel, and you only need one trade, you're gonna pull the trade permit and pay 75. If you're gonna pull, if you need to pull more than one trade, you're gonna do, you're going to call it a remodel and pull the $100 permit.
That's correct.
I also want to say thank you for doing your bundling.
Doing the what?
The bundling.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, the bundling. All right, so council, that is item 8A, the workshop presentation, and as I promised, we are, Colin, I know you love me for this, we're zipping over to 12E. 12E on page four, and that is an individual consideration item, and it has ordinance number 2019-25. And so if someone was inclined to make a motion, it will be important to say whether you are making a motion on the document that you have in front of you, which is all of the fees, or whether you're making a motion for the document that is in the packet, which is only the new fees.
And Mayor, to simplify this, if you choose to make a motion on the all-inclusive, it will include the amendment on page five of 13, that includes trade permits on accessory structures and the accessory buildings, and no 5% administrative fee on the residential kitchen remodel that the mayor mentioned earlier.
Okay, and prepare, I gotta read it, and then y'all can make, we can have conversations and motions. So we're on item 12E. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-25 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop City Code of Ordinances, Appendix A Fee Schedule. Section A 3.01 General Provisions, Section A 3.04 Building Code, Section A 3.05 Electricity, Electrical Code, Section A 3.06 Plumbing Code, Section A 3.07 Mechanical Code, Section A 3.15 Swimming Pools, Section A 3.16 Moving of Structures, Demolition and Site Work, Section A 3.20 Signs, Section A 3.21 Streets, Rides Away and Public Properties, Section A 10-03 Subdivision Ordinance, Section A 14.01 Zoning, General Provisions, and Adding Section A 5.10 Fire Planning, Review and Inspection Fees, and Providing for Finding the Facts, Enactment, Enforcement, or Repealer, Separability, Establishing an Effective Date, and Proper Notice and Meeting.
I'd like to move to approve in toto the newest version.
The one on the DIAS with the amendments. I have a motion from Councilmember Ennis.
I second it.
I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any discussion on the DIAS before we vote? Councilmember Jackson?
I think that some of the fees that are online, and also the ones that we have tonight are a little bit different from the ones online, and so just so that we know that, you know, people that might be looking to it online, they'll see something different than what we have.
Be updating it as soon as we can, yes, thank you. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the rolls.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, and everyone breathes a great sigh of relief. Thank you, Mr. Jones, Mr. Joe, Andreas, city manager, good job. All right, moving on, on work session briefings, discuss the water, I'm on 8B, discuss the water treatment plant number three design, and receive presentation from Bob Lane with KSA. We have all of KSA with us here tonight.
So Mayor and Council, I want to introduce, Bobby, you can come on to the podium, but we do have a number of members of KSA with us. We have Bob Lane, who is the lead engineer on our wastewater treatment plant, Greg Darcy, his partner in crime. We have Christopher Adler. We have Hunter Hilburn, who is the director of communication, and we all know and love Robin Percy. I want to tell you that it really has been a fun experience to plan this water plant. I love Bob, I always love when he puts his glasses up on his forehead. I tell him he's going wastewater on me, because he getting serious at that point. There has been a lot of work that has gone into this project, because we heard you loud and clear in 2018, when y'all said very definitively that the ratepayers don't change whether we look at this as a short-term or as a long-term expenditure. But we need to plan this plant so that we build it for its useful life, so that we, and we did some analysis on short-term and long-term cost, and while a prepackaged plant might be cheaper in the short term, it turned out to be $11 million more expensive than going with an activated sludge. And so I've been really impressed, every time there has been some point in the design, and we needed specialists, folks like Christopher would show up. Christopher's at Longview. He and one of his fellow engineers shows up in Bastrop at 3:30 on a Friday afternoon to discuss pipe with us. And I think that just speaks to the commitment that they have had. I'm really excited for Bob to walk through this with y'all. This is a long time coming. This community has needed a wastewater treatment plant for a decade. We've been talking about it, and tonight, you're going to see the design, and Bob's gonna cover a lot of the things that I think make this plant work. And the challenge that I've given Bob and his team is, is 40 years from now, I want whoever's in charge of it to look back and say, "They got it right." So with that, Mr. Lane, go wastewater on them, put your glasses on your forehead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council, city manager as well. Thank you for this time this evening. I feel blessed to be here. Since October 31st of last year, we've been working aggressively to try to produce the plans and specifications that you will need for the future projects. Largely your wastewater treatment plant, your West Side Collection System Sewer Network, and then your East Side Transfer Force Main, and some other smaller projects as well. And tonight, I'm just here to provide you with a status update, and just briefly, we would like to share with you a video that our Hunter Hilburn has developed. And Hunter has gone around through city staff and through project team members, and have interviewed them mostly on a one-on-one basis, and he has compiled a video that we would like to use for public participation in future public meetings. And we would like to share that with you this evening, in hopes of really getting a feedback from you. And so, and so that, we believe that that, this venue is a great opportunity for us to share, then get the feedback, tweak it, perfect it, and then hit the ground running for public participation here shortly next month. Is that okay?
Sure.
Can we begin the video?
...build out of structural steel components.
Was that we needed to be good neighbors.
We're looking at what the future growth of Bastrop would be.
And a corrosive environment has a limited lifespan.
My name is Bob Lane with KSA. I'm the project manager for the City of Bastrop Wastewater Treatment Plant. It's a real pleasure to be here today to talk about the plant and its operation, and some of the design criteria that we use to develop the project.
Hi, I'm Lynn Domble, city manager for the City of Bastrop. There are really two reasons why we're building a new wastewater treatment plant. The first one's very simple. Our existing plant is antiquated and just about beyond its useful life. The second reason is, it's important that we plan not only for today, but for tomorrow. Everybody enjoys a wastewater treatment plant, whether they even recognize it or not, because as citizens, we expect our toilets to flush today, tomorrow, next year, a decade from year, from now, or many years from now. And our planning for this wastewater treatment plant will ensure that our regional wastewater treatment needs are taken care of, and we've done it in a very fiscally sustainable way.
The Texas Commission of Environmental Quality provides design guidance for communities to assist them in planning to satisfy their goals and their needs going forward into the future.
So when you reach 75% of your capacity, you have to go into design. And when you reach 95% of your capacity, you have to be under construction. We're currently working under that schedule.
The city's existing 1.4 million gallon per day rated wastewater treatment plant will soon reach its maximum limit, and will no longer be able to accept additional flows from new citizens moving into the community. That's where KSA comes in. KSA is going to be providing the community with a new 2-MGD rated wastewater treatment plant to help the city achieve their goals in growing into the future.
There's been a lot of important planning, strategic planning, that's gone into the construction and design of this wastewater treatment plant. We're building it not only for the needs today, but it has been designed so as the capacity needs to be expanded, that it literally can be built upon, not only twice, three times, but four total expansions. And our goal in the design of this project is very simple. We want whoever is in charge 40 years from now to look back and say, "Wow, they got it right."
So the reason we had to build a new plant is, one, we're at capacity. Two, the old plant is over 40 years old, and needs to be decommissioned. The reason we've selected the current location is because of the growth, and we know that it's coming, but with the shape the old plant is currently in, we need a new plant, just to make sure we can flush the toilets and keep that kind of stuff happening.
One of the policy decisions that council made relative to this regional wastewater treatment plant was that we needed to be good neighbors. And good neighbors to us is two things. One, the visual aspects of living near the wastewater treatment plant.
The leadership in the City of Bastrop asked KSA to help them create and design an aesthetically pleasing wastewater treatment plant. an aesthetically pleasing wastewater treatment plant. The city staff was really concerned about what is this plant gonna look like from the neighborhoods outside of the plant? So, KSA worked with the staff, and we developed a, a tree buffer, a landscaping buffer around the wastewater treatment plant. We developed a landscaping fence around the plant as well. This is gonna be utilizing a rancher-style combination of wooden and stone columns. And in addition to that, we're also providing an administration building that's utilizing the construction materials that closely resemble or match up with the construction materials elsewhere in other neighborhoods in the area. Basically, what we wanted to help the city provide is a wastewater treatment plant that's basically aesthetically pleasing from, from, from the residential neighborhood's perspective.
And the intent is, is as you're riding down the road, or perhaps living across the street one day from this plant, that we look like literally grandma's old farmhouse. And all of the mechanics of treating wastewater will be behind a screen of trees. That would be similar to grandmother living out in the woods. And hopefully, the residential neighborhoods that build up over the next decades around this plant will just see that as the farmhouse that's always been there.
We understand that the wastewater treatment plants in the marketplace generate odors, and the City of Bastrop leadership recognized this as well. The leadership has, has, has asked KSA to look at how we can manage this odor.
The second aspect of being a good neighbor is smell. And KSA has done a great job of ensuring that all of the technological advances that are available to us today to mitigate smell have been built into this plant.
KSA has looked at the odor emissions from their existing wastewater treatment plant and other wastewater treatment plants in the marketplace that are gonna be utilizing the treatment technologies that we are going to incorporate in this plant.
My name is Greg Darcy, and I'm an engineer with KSA. And I'm here today to talk about the hydrogen sulfide collection and measurement study that I performed in support of the odor control design. So our methodology for conducting the study was to find an installation that was similar to the installation that we planned to design for plant number three, and that was plant number two, which is for the City of Bastrop. And we took that as being most alike, the plant that we're designing. And so we took an H2S instrument to that plant, and we measured the H2S being emitted by several of the unit processes at that plant that will also be present at plant number three. Also, to get additional data, went to the City of Flugerville and measured H2S coming off of their aeration basins, because their aeration basins are very similar to the ones that we intend to install at plant number three. So the results that we found were that at the inflow pump station, we had a composite H2S concentration of 16 parts per million of hydrogen sulfide, where a part per million refers to one pound of hydrogen sulfide per 1 million pounds of air. And then subsequently, at the screenings box, we found a concentration of roughly eight parts per million. And then at the aerobic digester, we found six parts per million. The remaining processes had essentially zero parts per million of H2S concentration measured by us. And this corresponds to what we observed in the field, which was that I was able to smell odors coming away from the inflow pump station and the screenings box and the digester, but I smelled no aggressive odor coming from the aeration basin, the clarifier, or chlorine contact chamber. So the numeric results corresponded to field observations and indicated to us that the odors coming off of the aerobic aeration basin, clarifier, and chlorine contact basin were close to negligible or negligible.
And in evaluating this data, KSA is, is recommending covers over, over major unit processes that generate odors in the plant itself. And when we cover these unit processes, we are then going to pull a vacuum out from all these structures and run that air through an odor control scrubber. Odor control scrubbers use media to filter out and reduce the hydrogen sulfide emissions.
It's important to know that wastewater treatment plants do smell from time to time. But based on the technology that's available for us today to mitigate that smell, we've incorporated all of those design features so that we can meet the Council's charge to be that good neighbor.
Chris Saylor, I'm the Senior Project Manager overseeing the, the collection system for the Bastrop project, taking the wastewater, collecting it throughout the city, and sending it to the wastewater plant.
I'm Jeremy Orr with KSA. I'm a project manager. Been working for KSA for eight years. We're working on the collection system portion of this project.
So part of this project is also some west side collection lines, which is some rather large pipe.
And it has to do with pipes longevity and pipe capacity. And when you're laying out gravity sewer lines, especially trunk lines, that convey all wastewater to a centralized treatment unit, you have to consider not only current but future conditions.
You need to put in the proper infrastructure. Currently, the city has a lot of old infrastructure that needs to be replaced. This plant will be part of that, but the collection system will also be part of the whole project. And it allows us to, again, cost share with other members so that it doesn't all lay on the backs of the current customers.
When we first started working on this project, the city wanted to consider laying out the collection lines in a way that would not prevent expansion in the future. They wanted it to be laid out in such a way that facilitate development in this area that's experiencing a lot of growth. We considered what we needed to do in order to extend the lines as far north as possible.
And a lot of times, especially when with, when we're dealing with long-term and high-growth areas like Bastrop, we have to, we have to think to the future quite a bit. And laying a sewer line that has a very short-sighted future can be problematic as you may run out of capacity soon. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to find that right balance of pipe diameter and pipe material that will allow the best use of funds while giving the longest practical life for the budget dollars.
In March of 2018, we had a work session with Council to discuss the long-term needs of water and wastewater for the City of Bastrop. During that conversation, Council issued a really important policy directive. And that was that we needed to evaluate the design, cost, and construction of our wastewater plant based on the life cycle of the asset. And by doing so, we had to factor in not only the cost of construction, but what would it cost to operate and maintain that system over its useful life? And we've done that. So we feel really good that we're doing the right things right in the construction of this wastewater treatment plant. Yes, it costs a little more upfront to get it right, but it pays off great dividends over the life cycle of the asset and how we operate and maintain that facility. Because we appreciate that our ratepayers, our customers, are going to pay for that not only in the construction phase, but in the operation and maintenance phase over its life cycle. So we've taken a very holistic approach in how this facility is being designed, constructed, and maintained.
Thank you for watching our presentation today. KSA is truly honored to be here. This is a critical project for both human environmental health, and KSA is going to be very proud to continue working in your community for many years to come. Thank you.
Hunter, you want to provide the standing ovation for us, please? So if our Hunter Hilburn starts vacationing a lot in California, we'll know why. So, Mayor and Council, thank you for watching our video this afternoon or this evening. And we welcome any comments that you may have.
Colin, will you go back to the slide presentation? Because we added a couple of slides in addition to, go to the next one. Bob, why don't you talk about how, I call them Lego pieces, but how this works so that as we meet our regional CCE, how we can expand without having to build another plant?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So the, so do you read?
You have to take the mic. Sorry.
Oh, okay, thank you. So, moving, moving counterclockwise across the page here, the very first unit process that we encounter is called the inflow pump station. And the flows will immediately leave the inflow pump station, move through the headworks, where we'll have an odor screen and a grit chamber. And then the flows will move over to the oxidation ditch, and then subsequently move through the clarification chambers, and then on through the coronation chamber and the de-coronation chamber for, for final transmission out through the effluent structures. There's many, many supporting structures, chemical feed addition, ancillary systems, sludge man, sludge management facilities in several buildings on the project site. One of the things that we have done here on this project is, is we've provided or put additional work in to the inflow pump station and into the chlorine feed building and through the outfall structure, and then also into the administration building to facilitate additional expansions and, 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 and future growth quickly and easily. So in this specific instance, if we wanted to add wastewater treatment plant number two, which is the second block in this, in this image right here, the second block to the right is wastewater treatment plant number two. So when you're ready to build wastewater treatment plant number two, all your flows will still go into the inflow pump station. All we have to do is add three new pumps. And then after that, we'll add a new headworks right next to the existing headworks, and the flows will exit out of that structure, go around just slightly north of the oxidation ditch, and then head directly into the next oxidation ditch chamber for economy of scale, ease of constructibility, fast expansion, less, less capital cost. And then it will move through wastewater treatment plant number two, out through the, through the supporting outlet structures and into an outfall pipe that is sized already for those future flow rates. So what we have done essentially is we've built the very front end of the plant and the very back end of the plant for full maximum build-out. So when you add wastewater treatment plant number two, three, and four, all you gotta do is add these Lego pieces in between. Boom, boom, boom. And so everything else is just already set, and it's locked and loaded and ready to go. And I estimate that you probably end up saving, probably in the upwards of maybe seven and a half to $10 million worth of future capital costs. But of course, you'd be incurring some additional costs at this time, but, but nonetheless, large capital savings in the future in addition to the simplicity of the tie-ins. And, and because tying in a brand-new wastewater treatment plant can be a very difficult task. Making sure that you can hydraulically handle that flow, where are you gonna get the space, how much space do you need, do you have enough, how are you gonna get the electricity over there and whatnot? So all of these factors have been developed into Phase One.
Is, in this slide, are there two plants or four plants?
Okay, so there's four plants. There's actually, plant number two is right next to the first one, then plant three, and then plant four.
Okay, I thought that was the case, but I just wanted to clarify.
So at total construction, this is, can process 8 million gallons a day. And if you divide that by 250 gallons per person, it's right at about 30,000 people.
Yes, ma'am.
So we are planning for the future because our regional convenience, or certificate of convenience and necessity is three times the size of the City of Bastrop. So we have planned this in hopes that this is the only regional wastewater treatment plant this community has to build.
Additional drawing highlights, of course, this is the administration building. It was also in the video as well. But in this, in this graphic here, we are, we are looking at it from the position where we are directly north of the administration building and facing and looking due south. So what we're seeing right here, obviously, is the, is the rancher-style fence and tremendous stone columns. And then, and then basically what might look like is a two-story rancher home where the second floor has what might appear to be as a second bedroom windows for the kids. And then, of course...
Bob, before you leave that, let me interject something here. Mayor and Council, we all appreciate that in the last 10 years, we had a fire in 2011, a fire in 2015, we had two FEMA-declared floods in 2015, we had two FEMA-declared floods in 2017, I mean, 2016, and Hurricane Harvey in 2017. So we have experienced eight FEMA-declared disasters in the last decade. So we have looked at this building as a potential EOC site, because you will be able to get this, to this from 304. So if something happens on 71 and our access into town, we now have an auxiliary EOC that people can get to from 304. One of the challenges that TCEQ requires is redundant generation, so that you can always flush your toilets. Typically, that is a diesel-fed generator. We all know that in a flood, we become an island, and we can't get diesel. So we talked to them about, we need to eradicate one less thing for us to worry about. So Bob Lane has worked with TCEQ, and we have verbal permission to have a natural gas generation, generator. The natural gas is gonna come from the west, electricity is gonna come from the east. So we have redundant power supplies in the event of an emergency. They have designed that administrative building so that there's flexibility in offices, because this doesn't have to just be a wastewater treatment plant, there's offices. So if we have a need for other departments to grow into that, that building is built with flexibility, again, gonna be there for 40 years. So we've really worked hard to not only make sure that the wastewater treatment plant works, but that we've thought about our needs operationally long-term as well. And I think KSA's done a great job in ensuring that there's a lot of flexibility with this.
Thank you, Lynn. In addition, these building materials that we have worked with city staff to develop includes split wood, Austin natural stone work on the lower level to provide, again, a, a common building material theme that we have noticed in residential neighborhoods that are very, very close by. Again, this is, we've already hit on some of the finer points associated with the expandability here, phases wastewater treatment plant number one through four. Also in the video, if we recall, we were referencing the landscaping buffer, which, as you can see in, in green with the tree highlights in the north edge and then also on the west edge. What you don't necessarily see there is that there's actually 180 feet of distance from the north edge of the property line all the way down to the oxidation ditch. TCEQ only requires 150-foot buffer there. And, but we actually have 180 foot there. We, we needed the administration building there, but an additional side benefit of all this land is that it just provides more space for more trees. So it can provide a, a substantial tree line buffer for you, and especially for your neighbors looking south.
Mayor and Council, we spent some time thinking about this, because you spent the better part of the year talking about building Bastrop fiscal sustainability. And we don't want to be the reason that property values shrink because you're across the street from the wastewater treatment plant. So we really spent some time on how can we fix that? And by buffering this, our hope is, is that it's in the woods, people don't see it, and as you drive by, you don't artificially deflate the property because you're across the street from the wastewater treatment plant. So we recognize that in years to come, that it's likely that there will be houses across the street from this, and we don't want, again, to be the reason that the property values decline.
Where's, where's the administration building on this drawing? Is it up there in the left-hand corner?
By the parking lot.
Yes, top, top lot.
Well, I can't see the parking lot.
It's page 22.
Where item number two said, item number two up in the top left there, right there. Thank you. Thank you.
I was just about to ask, does it, do we have a pointer or something?
It's on page 20 of the packet, and it's a whole lot easier way of looking at it.
And this building, sir, provides an additional 2,000 square foot of office space for the Public Works Department. Any other questions about this slide?
Council, any other questions? Councilmember Peterson?
Just a quick comment. In the past, I've operated a, a quick plant versus the, excuse me, let's see, the, the sludge plant. And the sludge plant is just the only way to go in the direction we're going in for the future. It's just a, a good, good thing to have.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you, KSA.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Council, it is 8:06.
Before you go, I, I do want to tell the public at this point in time that we're going to have an open house on September 19th at 6:30 in this very room, so that the citizens that are most affected will have an opportunity to come, visit with KSA staff, and engage, and make sure that their questions are answered. If there are things we have not thought about, we certainly want to do that at this point in time. You're at about 60% design, anticipate you'll be at 90 by the end of September.
Yes, ma'am. We're, KSA is on schedule.
Yes. So the hope is, is that we'll get the TCEQ permit process reviewed, and we'll be under construction when?
We'll be going out to bids in January, and with construction bidding likely within two months from January, March. We'll be going out to bids in January and with construction bidding likely within two months from January, March. March timeframe, March of 2020.
How long will construction go on?
18 months, sir, for the wastewater treatment plant and the west side collection system pipeline project as well.
And Bob Lane, we're gonna be flushing toilets out of that plant when?
Do you know the date? Yes, ma'am, I think the answer's yes.
It should be, I hope, September of 2021. That's pushing them, but that is our target today, that we will be operational with this plant in September of 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, KSA. Good job, appreciate it and go forth and design and do those things. It is 8:08 and we've got another set of engineers to hear from. Council, I'd like us to do 8C and 8D and then we'll take a quick bio break. Is that okay? Is everybody doing all right? I'm getting nods from everyone. The next item on the agenda is item 8C, discuss the street maintenance plan strategy for fiscal year 2020 and receive presentation from Walker Partners Engineering.
So, mayor and council, Walker Partners has two things on the agenda. So, three of the five sitting out there are here for the first one. We have Jed Walker of Walker Partners with us, as well as John Linder and Alan Munger are here to talk about street maintenance. Mr. Walker, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. City Manager and Madam Mayor and Council. Appreciate y'all having us here tonight. Let me make sure I can figure this out. There we go. So, we are here tonight to recommend to you all a strategic plan to move forward and implement a cost-effective street maintenance and street rehabilitation program as soon as possible. This is not to wow you with the graphics. However, if you can see, the project that you all have for street maintenance, preventative maintenance rehabilitation, it is a robust street project. If you just look at the yellow and red and the green up there, it is a lot of street. In fact, we're looking at doing 21.9, almost 22 miles of city streets this year, this coming year. And this is maintenance including crack sealing and pavement repair, as long as seal coats, fog seals, and doing preventative maintenance to increase the value of your asset and increase the life expectancy of that roadway. Okay, we ran into a problem. And the problem is, is that we gave you all a cost estimate of $600,000 to get this program implemented in 2019. That didn't happen. What did happen was, we got one bidder and that one bidder was the low bidder. And that low bid was $1.5 million, actually over $1.5 million, almost three times the amount that we had estimated. So, we are not here to make excuses. We're going to own it, it's on us, it's 100% Walker Partners' problem, and we're not gonna let it be your problem. So, we're gonna show you how we're gonna move forward from tonight and make it a good situation, not a bad situation. We're not gonna give you excuses, but we need to give you some reasons for what happened. The bidding climate in Texas right now for highway work is different than what it has been probably any time in my lifetime or career. In 2014, Proposition 1 of the state of Texas funded $5.4 billion for highway construction. Then in 2015, Proposition 7 came back with $5 billion additional amount of funding. And what this means is, is that just in the Austin district alone, right now, there's over $1 billion in construction. What that equates to is, the contractors that do roadway work are just extremely busy. And that does not help Bastrop right now and it did not help Bastrop a month ago when we bid your project. And I have to say, we didn't just advertise your project and then go to sleep and go sit on the couch. We personally called and encouraged 10 local and regional paving contractors to bid your project. We also went through a medium to advertise your project, it's called CivCast, where the roadway contractors will get a heads-up with what your estimated project cost is, a little bit about your project cost. To try to further advertise and talk up Bastrop's project. Even in doing all that, though, we still just got one bidder. And one of the reasons is, is because there's so much construction work going on. The city manager very nicely asked us if we do many of these types of projects. And the answer is yes. Fortunately for us and for our other clients, we haven't had this issue. But, the one thing that is constant, the costs in 2019 have consistently been higher. We did take that into your account when we did your estimate for $600,000. But, on cities and municipalities that we're doing work on in 2019, that we also did similar street rehabilitation projects in 2018, across the board, the costs are 25% higher. And that's just a fact that we're having to deal with today. A lot of that is material cost increases. In July of this year, that was the record high for the cost of oils, the emulsions and oils that go into asphalt production, much higher than what was here this time last year. Labor costs have increased just because of supply and demand. Texas does not have any more workers and there's a lot more work going on out there right now. So, these may all sound like excuses, they're not intended to. I'm trying just to paint a picture as to what we have run up against. Another thing, besides the bidding climate, is just the climate. This past spring, we had record rainfalls in many counties in Texas. Just to give you all an example of Bastrop County, look at April, May, and June. The orange is what you received in terms of inches, the blue is what your average is. So, what happened when we bid your project in July and we had a pretty short window to get the paving work done before it got cold. A lot of the contractors had been backed up and their schedules were overrunning because they couldn't do much of the work in April, May, and June. And so, we were actually told by some of the contractors, they did not bid your all's project because they were so behind on the projects they already had. And they didn't want to get into a liquidated damage where they were penalized with the projects they were already working on because they were so late. Again, not an excuse, just we had to go peel the onion back a little bit to find out exactly what happened. Okay, so we do have a strategic plan for you all and this is what it is. We want to rebid this project in October. And the reason that we think it's strategic in October is because there will be a TechDOT bid opening or letting in October as well. And we want a low bidder to get a lot of work at that October bid letting to do work in Bastrop County. And then we want that person to be in a great position. He doesn't have to be in the position to be the little bidder, but we want him to be in a great position to be able to then bid your all's project just a few weeks later. Because you all could benefit from the synergistic effects of having the mobilization already occurring for a contractor to move into the area and to do the paving. Another thing that we noticed is that some of the unit costs that you all got in the bid that was three times our estimate was for something as simple as a seal coat, which y'all might refer to as a chip seal, from a slang term. Was actually quite a bit more expensive than doing a hot mix asphaltic concrete overlay. Well, that normally doesn't happen, but what we want to do this go-around, we're gonna go in and put some additive alternates in and let the contractors bid both. And let's see what happens, let's give you all the choice as to how you want to go. If the prices come back anywhere close to what we saw this past month, it's gonna be a much better value for you all just to repave your streets with hot mix. Another part of our strategic plan that we want to recommend to you is to go in and do competitive sealed proposals instead of the low bidder type of procurement. Which you all may be historically accustomed to is going and bidding it publicly to paving contractors and then taking the low bidder. Well, the one thing that that doesn't do, it doesn't allow you all to pick and choose the low bidder based on schedule or qualification or past history of performance. And the state legislature has given you all the ability, freedom, and flexibility to go in and do competitive sealed proposals where you can add in and incorporate for your decision-making process, things like schedule, things like what their past performance and record is in other cities of completing projects similar to this one. And one of the things that we think is important is we don't want to give the contractors willy-nilly free run of the plays, but we do want to give them a lot more flexibility on the scheduling. What we ran into on this particular project last time, we bid it in July and to do seal coats and fog seals and some other type of maintenance methodologies that we were proposing. The only time you can do that is when the weather is warm. And so, we were up against a wall of trying to get it done between July and October. And that was 21.9 miles of streets that we were trying to shoehorn into a really, really small window. We don't want to do that this time. We want to take that schedule and put it a lot longer of schedule, but we don't want to make it any less convenient for your citizens. And the way we do that is we can come up with ways to bracket the schedule so that if a contractor starts a street, he finishes that street in a reasonable timeframe. And so, he doesn't, he wouldn't go in and start a street and not finish it for nine months. Nope, that's not what we're saying at all. But, give him the flexibility of when he can get his crews and get in there and do a street, get in there, do it, and get back out. And then he may not be able to come and do the next street for two more weeks, but we give him that flexibility to do it. Because we think if we do that, you all are gonna get a much, much, much better value in the end. The other thing in the flexible scheduling is that we can do some work in the winter time. We can't do chip seals or seal coats, but we can do some crack sealing, we can do some base and pavement repair work. And so, even this winter, while they can't do everything, there are a lot of things that can be done. So, we think that by expanding that schedule, getting a bid, beginning until the end of next July, before school starts for the end of next July. That we can manage the project for you to where the contractor can deliver it at a very good value. We went back and we did some updating on our cost estimate. What we do when we do an engineer's opinion of probable cost for you and for other municipalities just like you, is we go in and we look at what a median or average cost would be. And we add generally a contingency factor to it and the contingency depends on the complexity of the project. We did that on your $600,000 estimate and we still feel good about that. But, what we've done here is we went back and we looked at a more worst-case scenario. And we looked at each and every individual item that we have for the project. And we said, okay, what happens if this does come in extremely high? We added those unit costs up and this is number 826-8. Our hope is still that it comes in at $600,000, but a high bid would be 826-8. Your all's bid that you received, the one and only, was twice that number. So, all I'm trying to do is point out to you how unreasonable the bid was that you received. Whoops, I'm missing, we have a schedule in here.
It's on page 37.
Okay, we have a schedule in here. And basically, what our schedule shows is that we want to advertise somewhere around the 26th of September. And then we want to receive bids sometime in mid to late October. We want to get those bids awarded in November. We want to allow construction to begin sometime in December and we want the project to be finished next July. And we don't want it to be a pain for you all in between. I mean, I know that's a long time period, but like I said, we want it to be methodical and organized and getting, get the streets done one at a time. We do have, or we did have, I'm not sure where it is here, but we have a project sign that we want to show you. We want to get that sign out ASAP and get it up to show your citizens that things are happening and things are happening in 2019 and they're gonna be finished in 2020. Any questions?
So, the bids come back over 826, Walker Partners is going into the construction business? Is that what I heard? You're gonna open a construction firm?
Yeah, you might need to ask us to hand the project off to another engineering firm if that happens.
And folks know, I've got a background in it. I don't see them as excuses, I see it as fact. There's, the reality is, there's tons of work and this is not the work that people want. This is not that fun of work to do. They're having to deal with the citizens. It'll be done and there's folks that can do it, but I completely agree with what you're saying. I am shocked that the hot mix is coming back cheaper than the chip seal. I've never seen that, never seen that. So, I'm curious and I'll be asking Trey later if it's material supply or what's going on with that. But, I think it's really important to ask for the alternative because whatever's driving that may not stay consistent. And so, we ought to be able to pick and choose on that.
Right, and, but one thing I failed to say is, in 2018, the historic low month for asphalt and oils was October. So, that's another part of our strategy here is when we rebid it in October. If history repeats itself from 2018, it would be a good time for asphalt and oils.
So, are you gonna give a duration based on the street? Are you gonna do it by length? Or how are you gonna control the schedule? And I understand you said reasonable, but how are you gonna control that?
Well, two ways. One, we want to bookend it and we want to do it by street because we think that that's the easiest and most straightforward way to do it, not linear footage. But then the other thing, if the council does choose that the competitive sealed proposals are a method that you would be willing to go forward with. Besides us bookending it, we want to ask contractors to be creative and then provide us with their bookends and their strategy on how to do it. Because somebody could come up with a better way to skin the cat than we have. And if that means a better value to you all, then we want to consider that.
Councilmember Ennis?
So, your 826,800 is just a ballpark estimate again?
It's just our estimate, yes, sir.
I'm surprised you even put that out there with all of this going on. I think I'd have kept my head down and said, we don't know how much it's gonna cost until we get the bids back.
They don't have the choice, we wouldn't let them do that. They gotta come, that's why they're engineers, they gotta come up with an estimate.
This doesn't do us much good, but, you know.
But, you're saying you think that's the high end?
We think that's the high end. But, we wanted the council to know just the parameters of what we think the cost should be. We still stand behind our estimate at $600,000. We were proven wrong on this last time because the one bid came in so much higher. We went back, we really, really sharpened our pencil, we did a lot more research and we came up with a number that we feel like is the highest reasonable number, and that's the 826. So, we just want you all to have a framework there of what the bid should be within. They should not be over 826 and they should be around 600.
I'm not trying to beat up on you, I'm just, it's just, this is what, the second time we've gone through this?
This will be the third shot at it.
Third shot, okay.
Different projects, though, because before the bid that we were talking about was Old Austin Highway and this is all of the other streets, so it's two different projects.
It's all streets and it's all bids and they're all coming in high.
That's exactly right.
It's starting to get into a, you know, treadmill.
And I do want to say a huge thank you to Mr. Walker and Alan and John. This is, they're kind of in a catch-22. And we have all found our way ourselves in that. And I appreciate the extent that y'all have gone to to figure out how to make lemonade out of lemons. This is clearly very important to our citizens. Street maintenance is something they've been asking for for several years. And you've done a really good job of helping explain, to your point, not excuses, it just, it is what it is. And you're trying to figure out a way for us to benefit, let people use their downtime to help us pay for the overhead. We'll get a benefit for that because they're paying for things that they otherwise would not have money for. And there should be a return on investment to our citizens. So, I really appreciate you hearing our concerns and coming back and putting something before council that makes sense. What we have pledged with Walker Partners is that we will put together a very standardized communication plan. So, when we do have the bookends from the contractor, we're telling the neighbors well in advance. We're making sure garbage gets picked up, mail gets delivered, and they don't come home one day and are surprised the street's closed. So, we will have a very routine process so as a contractor mobilizes on a street, that neighborhood is well aware of it before it happens.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
What I really appreciate is the fact that in a region where at one point, some odd big and dollars' worth of contracts out there, that our little 600,000, 800,000 dollar project is getting this much attention. So, thank you for paying attention. I do have a question on the sealed bid proposal process. Does that mean that if you get two or three responsive bids, you're able to go into negotiation with those people to see what best deal that you can get for the city?
No, it doesn't exactly mean that. What it does mean is, is that you can evaluate those three best responders for something other than price.
Instead of just the low bidder. So, the parameters are set, but you have control over which parameter means more, is how I'm understanding.
Mayor Protim, in your world, it would be called best value.
In my world, I knew exactly what it meant, I wanted him to say it.
Councilmember Rogers?
Okay, I have a question. I think city manager may have answered this, but in a perfect world, let's say you get all your bids and everybody's happy. Will there be like a schedule, so let's say you have a couple of streets in different colors here? In March, this street's gonna get done and then, you know, have a master plan so all the citizens know which month their street's gonna begin or something?
There will be that. The only thing I can tell you is that things change and changes will change due to weather, due to whatever. It's not going to be perfect, but we have to communicate. The contractor needs to communicate with both us and the city and the citizens as the project's going on to keep them aware of the changes, to keep them aware of the schedule. And it can be as easy as in blocks A through L, those are all gonna be done in the next two months. Let's say, we can have a meeting with blocks A through L and tell them what that schedule is. And then, and then give a heads-up to blocks M through N and tell them, okay, this is, you're next, this is what's going to happen. So, we can keep it within a framework, but at the beginning of the project, I would be hesitant to tell everybody, it's gonna start July 3rd and it's gonna finish on the 7th until we get to July 2nd or 3rd or whatever.
No, that's perfect, at least this citizen knows his work will be getting done in this timeframe somewhere in that.
Well, and we'll know that everybody's gonna be done by the end of July. To your point, give them a timeframe.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson?
And I guess that we'll be taking into consideration if there are special projects or events and things going on in the community. I mean, that'll be communicated, I hope, so that that doesn't conflict and impair those festivals, events, or special activities that's going on in the community.
Right, it's your all's project. And whenever we get a low bidder on board that we're all comfortable with, we will have a pre-construction conference and we will lay all that out.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, I'm sorry, Mayor Protim Nelson?
Are you all real comfortable and confident? Are you all real comfortable and confident in the July 31 completion?
Yes, sir.
Wow. Answer my question. Right, because that's right on the eve of a big, big, big event in our community each year, so.
Appreciate the fact though that, look at the map, we're not talking about Main Street, we're talking about other parts of the neighborhoods, but I don't disagree that there's, there'll be a lot of folks in town and a lot of things going on, so.
Coming from those neighborhoods.
Okay, any other questions? I would like us to, sorry Colin, go to 12O because we are going to reject the bids, all the bids, all one bid. So we are on item 12O, I'm on the bottom of page five, kind of towards the bottom of page five. Consider action to approve resolution number R2019-77 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, rejecting all bids for the 2019 Streets Program Maintenance and Preventative Maintenance Project, repealing all resolutions in conflict, providing severability and providing an effective date.
I would like to approve that motion that we reject all those bids.
I have a motion from Councilmember Jackson and a second from Mayor Protim Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
All right, and council, while we're here, this is an easy one and it will allow the rest of these gentlemen to go home. We're going on to 12R, which is on the very bottom of page five. Hold a public hearing. Consider action to approve resolution number R2019-76 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the City of Bastrop Updated Drought Contingency Plan, repealing all resolutions in conflict, providing severability and providing an effective date. And that's it. Trey, are you going to do this or is Joe going to do it?
Daniel.
Not everybody at once.
So Mayor and Council, Daniel Fraser and Joe Jenkins also with Walker Partners have helped us update our drought contingency plan. This is one of the boxes that TCEQ ensures we check periodically.
Yes, so thank you for your time this evening. The most recent version of this plan, I believe, was completed in 2012. As City Manager has noted, the TCEQ requires that this plan be updated on a periodic basis and submitted to the commission for their records. After reviewing the previous plan and comparing against model language in the Lower Colorado Regional Planning Group's Regional Water Plan, we've incorporated some of the template language they use as well as also have clarified a handful of small edits to the previous plan. However, one, kind of the big deal is there have been no substantial changes to the goals of the plan as far as the times defined for water restrictions, when you can, when you can't, which addresses can water on what days. All of that has remained the same as what was previously adopted. Once again, most of the edits incorporated in the current draft just were made for clarification purposes to the text and so forth.
Thank you. Council, questions?
Real quick, you said that TCEQ requires periodic updates?
Yes, sir.
Is there any timing on the periodic?
There is, they are due once every five years. So this current plan that we're working on is past due, but we've been in contact with TCEQ as far as being past the deadline and they're aware that it'll be forthcoming once it's adopted.
So you feel this will make us hold?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I will officially open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak for the public hearing?
No, Mayor.
I'm officially closing the public hearing. Council, any further questions?
Madam Mayor, move to approve resolution number R2019-76.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Protim Nelson and a second from Councilmember Peterson to approve resolution 2019-76. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Thank you, council. I think 8D is going to be super quick. Do you think it's going to be super quick? All right, let's do 8D and then we will take a very quick break. Discuss and provide policy direction regarding street standards in the City of Bastrop Extraterritorial Jurisdiction. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the 8D, so this is a direction y'all had requested at a previous meeting that we bring this for a policy discussion before you and it's how are we going to treat our streets in the ETJ. So an overview, chapter 212, Local Government Code gives us subdivision authority in our ETJ. That's streets, drainage, the configuration of lots and so forth. So House Bill 347 that was passed with the 86th legislation stripped the local authority for unilateral annexation. So why is that important to us? So that 145, 54 square miles that we thought one day might incorporate into the city, that pretty much vanished overnight. So when you're planning subdivisions in your ETJ, you're planning to one day take them over. So you care greatly what your street design is in your ETJ. Not having that ability could change that discussion and that's the policy discussion that you all need to give us direction on. And so that's important. What we still do care about is drainage, we care about life safety, we care about being able to fit a fire truck down it and ensure that it can provide adequate access for those things. It's troublesome because the 1445 agreement with the Bastrop County defers to our subdivision ordinance and our subdivision regulations for pavement, so like an eight-inch concrete with stabilized subgrade. And it also is pretty much silent in terms of what the streets should be. So it's just defaults to our standard every time. That's complicated. It's come up recently where we have a development in the county. The developer's going to put them in, dedicate them as public right-of-way, but the county doesn't explicitly say that they will accept those improvements. And so it kind of creates this no man's land where the county's not going to take them over, we're not taking them over and they're just built to this really high standard that's extremely expensive to maintain and is burdensome for several reasons. So the county standards currently, in their street design standards, they defer in most instances to text dot in terms of right-of-way width and things, but as far as pavement design, it speaks to a professional engineer, shall use analytical methods based on soil type, traffic loading, et cetera, to produce a 20-year minimum design life. So that's the county standards. Whoops. And again, our standards is, it depends on the soil types and whatnot. There's several ways to get there, but you can imagine like an eight-inch concrete or asphalt with a stabilized lime grade and some other things of that nature. So really, what we're looking for is how do you want us to treat these street improvements in the future as we process these subdivisions in our ETJ?
Mayor Protim Nelson?
For clarity, when you reference ETJ, you're talking about a statutory ETJ, that one mile.
I'm talking about Area A.
We're talking about all of it.
Yeah.
The challenge that we have with our inability now to annex, as Matt said, is we are now creating a burdensome infrastructure investment that the county doesn't want to accept because it far exceeds their pavement standards and the budget that they have for their streets. In the county, if we're not going to annex them, what we do believe we have a responsibility for is building the streets to a fire lane standard. We do need to be able to get our emergency vehicles in and out. We care greatly about the water system only as it pertains to fire flow and the fire hydrants. If we happen to sell them wastewater, we care greatly about inflow and infiltration, not necessarily about the taps at the house. And we care greatly about drainage. So there are values that don't change, but we are troubled by the fact that we sit in front of developers and we mandate these really expensive investments for them to only say, "Well, you don't want them, the county's not going to take them" and now you've given me some really expensive private streets. And so if you can provide us some direction tonight, that's great. If not, then we will just pause and let you, as I say, noodle this. And we will be back in the very near future because we do have to address this. The reason we have it on your agenda tonight is, is that the codes are going to, planning and zoning, for recommendation on the 26th of September. And if there is something that y'all are materially willing to do, we'd like them included in the codes that P&amp;Z adopts versus having to adopt them and immediately come back and amend them. But I appreciate the awesomeness of the decision we've placed with you tonight and we too are wrestling with them. We do recognize that there will be some standards that we will need to accept for municipal utility districts because we will have a consent agreement with them and they will mirror the values that we've talked about from a fire lane standpoint, from making sure that fire flow exists, inflow and infiltration if we're serving them wastewater and we will always make drainage a priority. So we will create checklists and some standards for those, but as we were beginning to peel the onion back, we recognize that in some instances, we could be potentially financially impacting some folks and that's a policy decision.
Councilmember Jackson?
I just wanted to bring a little bit of a historical perspective on that. The fact that although in our ETJ, and it is a large one, I think a lot of people want to keep in mind that the citizens requested that, that they be in our ETJ because of the lawsuit that was going on between the City of Austin and the City of Bastrop. And out of that lawsuit, the citizens chose us, rather than the City of Austin, a large percentage of those people to be in the, in our ETJ. And it wasn't an ETJ that was, that we went after, it was because of that suit that came through. And so that's important, I think, to take into consideration because a lot of these people did want to be in our ETJ. That doesn't mean that we want to burden them with extra costs and things, but I just want to keep that in mind and I think the citizens...
But I think, Councilmember Jackson and the City Attorney will correct me if I'm wrong, but the House bill doesn't differentiate between statutory ETJ or volunteer contract. ETJ is ETJ and we don't have the ability to annex.
Right, but I mean, I'm speaking of the ETJ that's currently in existence and that's not affected, I guess, by this.
It absolutely is affected by this and I think we're at the point with, since we can't do the annexation, I'm struggling with what's the value of an ETJ and what's the definition of an ETJ anymore anyway? Any comments?
Is the question about the value of an ETJ?
Yeah.
I think you're correct, Mayor, council. The new law that makes it very difficult to unilaterally annex applies to statutory ETJ and what some call the voluntary ETJ that we have here in Bastrop. It makes no difference. Realistically, the only annexation that I see coming forward is going to be consensual when property owners see an advantage for some reason to being into the city limits. And Mayor, your question about the value of an ETJ?
Well, that wasn't right, it was more of a definition. It doesn't seem to mean what it used to mean.
I think you're right. I mean, it used to be a future planning area. Cities planned out their ETJ anticipating there would eventually be expansion. Now that's a little bit in question because of our more limited authority in the ETJ and the difficulties of annexation.
So it feels like the annexation that's going to happen, because realize with the election, there's cost to the election and you're asking the people who live there if they want to now come in and have the ability to pay city property taxes and generally that election's not going to go well. But if it's consensual with a, if a developer wants to be in the city limits, then we would be doing a planned development agreement with them.
Pre-annexation agreement.
We would know they were coming, then it would seem reasonable to expect, "We're going to get you, we're going to maintain the streets, we want them built to our standards." But we're talking about people who, even though they volunteered into our ETJ, don't want to be annexed, and we have no ability to force them to be annexed. What are, what's the benefit of making them build to city standards? Councilmember Jackson, did you?
I guess I'm still a little confused because, I mean, I know that some of the people that chose to be in our ETJ don't want to be annexed, but yet still, if there was going to be annexation, they chose to come with us instead of Austin. So I'm trying to see how to work with those people that really would rather come this direction than go to the other and how we would work at, in terms of our policy decisions.
So what happened is, is that the legislature removed our authority to annex them in, period.
And City of Austin's as well.
Yeah, it's statewide, so nobody's going to be annexing. So the only reason, or the only way people will annex is either through the petition of the voters or a petition of the landowners. And to the mayor's point, really the only reason you'd want to do that, in my opinion, is because you had something broke you wanted somebody to fix. And why would we annex somebody with problem infrastructure so that our limited resources and taxpayers would take them? And so that puts in question, when would you voluntarily annex a group of people that wanted to be here? Because everybody wants to live in the county so they don't have to have our standards, they don't have to pay our taxes and if they decide they now want to, it's because there's something for them in this. And my comment as city manager is I'm struggling to take care of what we got. Why do we want more stuff we can't take care of? So that's the dilemma that has created, whether they signed a contract to be here or not, ETJ no longer has the same meaning thanks to the legislature with the stroke of their pen just immediately eliminating annexation.
Well, I hope that we would take that on a case-by-case basis, of course, and not just assume that those people are coming in because of problems and they may have another legitimate reason to want to become part of the city also.
And that was the mayor's point, when they do, we would have a development agreement with an individual landowner versus a, and if we did, we could mandate our standards versus forcing people to meet our standards because maybe they'll annex or maybe they won't. And that's the dilemma.
Okay.
Councilmember Ennis?
I feel like we're drinking out of fire hose on this and I think we ought to workshop it.
Okay. Mayor Protim Nelson?
Well, I mean...
Do you want some more time?
I would be fine to do it at the next meeting. I don't know how long it needs to be, but there are a lot of...
It's a lot.
We're already touching on a lot of issues that relate to this.
Okay.
And that's my...
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Well, we already know what damage 347 wrought on us as a city and I think we're at the point now that we have to look at what we can do to ensure that our citizens as well as our infrastructure is protected to the greatest extent possible. And I would hope that our 1445 goes far enough to address those issues to ensure that the drainage and flood mitigation issues that we've discussed over the past several months are met with the greatest emphasis to ensure that we, that we don't create problems for our citizens. I'm concerned that the county is not in a position to protect our infrastructure as much as they are wanting to have other priorities addressed. Are we in a position of saying how far the 1445 can go in protecting us from inappropriate or inadequate development in that ETJ that's immediately contiguous to our community?
We can. I mean, we would have to decide how we're going to divide up the ETJ and if we're going to do it any differently than we do now. The 1445 deals with our subdivision regulations, so any rules that we've adopted regarding subdivisions would apply. We also have signage authority in the ETJ. Sometimes that is quite significant.
So it's a big issue and I hear Councilmember Ennis and, is everyone in agreement? Come back, Councilmember Rogers?
I just have a question. Let's say if the standards stay the, or stay where they're at right now with the new three codes, they're called, but if a developer came in and he didn't want to spend all the money you're asking for, we could actually waive it for that development, is that correct?
Not anymore with the, with the House bill and the 30 days. It either meets it or you, or it doesn't. Because it's a subdivision.
Okay, I just was like, you know, that way we could...
It's a process of subdivision.
...allow the ones that, you know, that we don't want to spend a lot of... ...allow the ones that, you know, that we don't want to spend a lot, we could allow them to build it the way they wanted to without changing those categories.
The, the problem is, is now it's not council making that decision and it is a policy decision, so we need to set policy so we can implement that into our process.
Okay, then I guess I'm good with the workshop because I don't want to let...
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm with Councilmember, Councilmember Ennis and the city manager said we need to noodle this.
All right, I'll work with the city manager and we'll bring it back at an appropriate time. It is 8:50 and we are in recess. We're going to be back in six minutes and let Visit Bastrop get started. We are two hour, two and a half hours into this. I am so sorry, I was explaining to them, the consultants, we, we had to get through the consultants because they bill us to sit here, so some of them aren't. So really, really appreciate it. There's just, there's a lot going on in this, in the City of Bastrop. So we are moving on to staff and board reports. We are on item 9A, receive monthly report from Visit Bastrop. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Manager, Council. Pleased to do our monthly report. Thank you, Colin. There it is. We have a little bit of a different format this month, so don't panic by the number of slides. We're still going to go very rapidly through them. I was just finding that it was very difficult to read the slides, so we wanted to make the text more bigger and more legible for people to be able to, to see them from where they're sitting and at home. So again, don't panic, there's 44 slides, but we're going really quick. So, and we're also, I changed up the format a little bit. I'm going to start with sales before we move into marketing. And I want to talk about our sales for the month of July. We had six leads that came in for a total of 1,400 room nights, around 4,700 attendees with an economic impact of $866,000. We had four of our, of our definite book, so that's real money. 320 room nights, 595 estimated attendees to an economic impact of 142,000. We had two lead assists that went to the Hyatt. And that, if you see that, just two leads alone, 700 attendees, around 768,000 economic impact. And then we had two definite, so two of those leads went definite for 544 room nights, economic impact of 630,000. I ran the numbers.
Ms. Smith, can we just stop just for a breath?
Oh, breathe? Okay.
Because that represents half of your budget in one lead. You have almost paid for yourself with one lead, half of your budget. That deserves a round of applause.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you. And that's a perfect segue into what I was going to say, which is, as of currently, we are at $2.1 million in definite business. So we have exceeded our budgeting, our 1.1, 1.2 million dollar budget by almost $900,000.
And you've been here 11 months.
10.
Woo! Girl, I'm, I'm willing to hold your purse in there, that is fantastic results.
Thank you so much. It's a good team effort. This is the Lodging Industry Report, better known as the STAR Report. I am going to make a recommendation at our council, joint council meeting, that we eliminate this from our reporting. This is really just a report on the Hyatt. I've talked to the general manager at the Hyatt. It's, it's just really not a very good representation of what's happening here in Bastrop. I would prefer to look closer in terms of talking to the hoteliers and, and finding out exactly what's happening within that. We're just comparing, we're not comparing apples to apples.
Ms. Smith, with the results that you're getting, I think council's going to be very receptive to you showing us whatever you think is appropriate to continue.
Thank you. Okay, this is a new slide I put in. One of the line items that we have in our city agreement is to become basically your tourism destination experts. So I felt that this slide really shows us where things are trending monthly and then, and in in the future. And this is how it'll affect us here at home. Not so much with international traffic. International traffic is decreasing at a fairly rapid pace and leisure travel is holding the, the numbers high because they're going high, but international's coming down. So leisure travel is supporting the, the travel index numbers right now. So it's important to know, and that's based on our political climate, is the reason why international is, is in such a mess. But it's also just, it's good to know for us as we're looking at budgeting and how much we expect to grow in our hot funds, is that we are increasing, our total market is increasing, it's just a little bit slower pace right now, and this is just based on the U.S. Travel Outlook. So I feel these numbers are really important for us for what, what we do. Also Ashton's going to come up and go over our marketing and website and media and all of that, but quickly I wanted to report on the Corvette Invasion. She will be talking about the Corvette Invasion. And when you talked about the wiener dog, it made me, reminded me. So we had approximately 200 room nights and that was an economic impact of about $100,000 for that Friday, Saturday and, Friday, Saturday, and most people left on Sunday. So for a two and a half day event, it was around $100,000 in economic impact that we felt.
And how much did you put towards incentive or whatever? How much money did you put towards that?
I'll total with the convention center, it was around between $10,000 and $15,000.
So that's a $10,000 and $15,000 investment for $100,000 return.
Exactly.
I don't think you need a calculator.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, and we're hosting discussions about them coming back. So I'll turn the, this, the rest of this over to Ashton for the marketing update.
Good evening, everybody. Let's just jump right in. We're reporting on the month of July, so we'll start off with the website summary. I think the biggest thing to note about the website year over year is that we've seen really great growth, up 257%. Last year's numbers are reflected in the gray, this year's numbers are reflected in the green. Our top organic website pages kind of remain the same. We have a lot of activities around things to do, Hyatt onsite activities, and then of course, over the season, you know, Bastrop Homecoming was a big event in August, so we had searched for that in July, as well as Downtown Bastrop and the Patriotic Festival. And then highlight of our top cities include Austin, Dallas, Bastrop, San Antonio. Not much changed there, but we do watch that. Jumping into public relations, our overview for the month of July secured 22 pieces of coverage with an estimated advertising value of $3,300. Media relations is a big part of our PR effort. We submitted a media alert for the Corvette Invasion to our media outlets, including newspapers, magazines, radio and TV stations. From that piece of media alert, we received and secured some coverage. We had a live broadcast the day before the event actually took place. They did a highlight on the news talking about the event. And then we also had a nice article that was featured on the website as well, giving the who, but, where, when and why of the event right before it happened. We had more coverage on the day of the event through the Elgin Courier. And then the ClassicCars.com Journal also highlighted the event as well. We did receive some residual coverage for the Bastrop Patriotic Festival. We submitted that alert in June, but we did have some pickup in July, so we're reporting on it. We pitched in December for Bastrop to be included in budget travel for the top 10 coolest small towns in America, and that just came to fruition last week. So if you saw that floating around a couple of weeks ago, it was very cool for us, we mentioned in that. And kind of how we get that coverage is to proactively outreach to the publications and pitch Bastrop as a destination and kind of just hope that they write about us. Sometimes it turns around really quickly, sometimes it takes eight months, but we'll always report on the coverage that comes from those proactive outreach. Social media influencers are another part of our marketing campaign. We, we work with these folks because they have really good influence in the social media world and part of our marketing campaign is to generate awareness about our destination. So we hosted Kelly Tomlinson, she's our second influencer of the year. She's somewhat local, she lives in Austin, she has an RV and dogs and kids, so her content is around travel and food. You can see some of her stats there and where she chooses to blog. When they came in, they went to the Bastrop State Park, Lake Mina, Hero Water Sports, they featured a couple of different dining options, and they wrote a really nice blog post, which can be viewed when you click on that link right there. And then this is a highlight of her activity when she was in market of all the things she did. A lot of Instagram stories, Pinterest, Twitter, Facebook, so really good engagement and really good coverage about the destination through her audience. Betsy Seeger's was another influencer that we hosted. She's from Dallas and a little bit more of a city girl, if you will. So she focused around food and lodging, so we worked with and assumed to have her put up in one of those two-bedroom lofts that she has right over Historic Main Street, which was really cool. You can see some of her stats there and the content type that she writes about. We've been working on a blog, which has been a labor of love, but it's finally live. We have developed and published two blog posts that went live in the month of July, one focusing on romantic edgeways and one on how to live it up during the summer in Bastrop. We've since added three more blog posts and we're really excited about this because we always try and get everybody else to tell our story, but now we have a way to tell our own story. So we're proud of this. Blog stats, it's been live for a month, so now we can start reporting on our page views. We had about 175 people read our welcome blog post and they spent about two and a half minutes on the blog post, so that's really good engagement. Event submissions, it was the month of July, so you're going to see a lot of coverage for the Corvette Invasion, four pages or so where we were listed on Visit Austin, Austin Monthly, The Chronicle, Austin 360, Culture Map, Spectrum, 2512, the Austin Knot, Tour Texas and Texas Monthly. So good pickup from that event. You can see a couple of other submissions we submitted there that we didn't, we couldn't find pickup for, but we reported on the ones that we could find. Newsies at the Bastrop Opera House was also going on, so we also pushed that out as well and we saw some pickup from that event as well on the Community Impact and Culture Map in Texas Co-op. 2512 and KXM.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
On these, you have the estimated ad value?
Mm-hmm.
That seems disproportionately low.
It can be. It's kind of a metric that our agency uses to calculate what it would have cost if we were to have had to pay for this buy. So it's kind of a formula they use.
I bought ads before and none of them were that cheap.
I, I think his point is, is I didn't know you could buy an ad in the Texas Monthly for $99.
Yeah.
That's true. Well, ads are a little bit different than mentions and articles, so...
They're discounting it because of that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Well, and the digital buy as opposed to the print buy is a little bit more pricey, especially in Texas Monthly. So I'm looking ahead initiatives, which have, some of them have already come to fruition, but we will continue to work with our agency to source influencers. We will continue to proactively outreach to our media partners to get opportunities for the destination. We work closely with our community partners and we will also continue to post blog posts. The digital side of things, we do a lot of marketing through Google and those objectives are basically to build awareness and to drive qualified traffic, people who are actually searching for our destination. So we work really closely with keywords and Google to make sure that we're driving qualified traffic. Key insights for July, we created about 3,800 conversions, which basically means that our ad was served about 54,000 times when someone typed in something about Bastrop. Our ad was populated 54,000 times from that 54,000 people. 9,800 of them chose to click through and chose the action that we requested that they do, and so it created 3,800 conversions, which is a double-digit click-through rate, which is unheard of. So we put our click-through rate up there of 18% and then the average Google click-through rate is 2%. So really good numbers for us.
That sounds like Ashton deserves a round of applause. Hey, that's awesome.
Thank you. We also just wanted to highlight some of our top performing ad groups, so you can see what is driving interest for the destination. And then we also put in a slide here to kind of highlight some of our lowest performing ad groups. So we monitor this so that we give people what they want. User engagement shows how people are consuming our content, on what days of the week they are consuming our content, and a heat map shows where we're, you know, kind of getting interest. So you can kind of see Houston, Austin, Dallas and San Antonio represented there. Our demographic by age group, 18 to 65, or I'm sorry, 24 to 65 and female dominated. And then this is just a really quick display of if you were on your phone and you typed in "Visit Bastrop" or something Bastrop-related and one of our ads were to generate, this is what they would look like. So this is just a screenshot of our two highest performing ads. And the call to action is to call our office, and they're calling the office. So, like I mentioned before, campaign highlights, excellent click-through rate and low cost per action, so we're not paying a lot of money for people to click on our ads. One of the other really exciting things that we've done is we've, we've brought our app up to brand standard and we've relaunched it in the App Store, so it is available for download. So if you guys haven't downloaded that, it's a very cool reiteration of our website. It's got really cool tools on it, which we will begin to report on on a later date, and it's got itinerary mappings and all kinds of very cool stuff, so we're excited about that. I think that's it. I'll stand for any questions, if anyone has any. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you all so very much.
Any other questions? We'll see you all on the ninth.
Do you have some board with you you want to introduce?
Oh, yes, I believe we do. We have Kevin Plunkett, who is the, on our financial committee and also on the executive committee. And we also have Rick Brackett, who's the vice chair of the board. And we also have our staff here tonight. I wanted them to be able to see what it's like at city council, so maybe next month, Kristi will stand up here. So no, that's it. We'll see you on the ninth and we'll have a, a really great report with, in much more detail.
It's implying that you're leaving, Ms. Smith.
What?
That you're not going to stay. We have four more pages.
Oh, no, we're leaving. Good night. It's jammy time.
Thank you. Excellent job. Councilmember, Mayor Protem Nelson?
Comment? I was not a fan of the previous report, I am a fan of this report.
You like this? Okay, good. I know it's more slides, but go quick.
Much better. So we wanted to bring it up at our joint meeting, how much I...
Okay.
It, it really tells your story. You had a great story, but it was hard to understand, but the way you're presenting it, you are, everybody gets it and it's wow. And that's what you want.
I would make the suggestion that when you come on the ninth, that maybe you say, "This is what I think I should be reporting on."
Yes, I will.
And that would be, give us a good example and it may be, we may be able to say, "Yep, that looks good," and then we'll be done.
Great. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, Visit Bastrop.
Thank you all.
All right, moving on, we're on 9B, receive monthly development update. Mr. Jones?
While this is waiting to load, I think next month, I'm going to request if I can go before Visit Bastrop, not after. So our development update, again, our mission and purpose statement for the, for those at home, doing it at home or reading the packet online. These are our monthly activity matrix from July to the middle of August. So we had 217 counter visits, we issued 120 permits, and this is something y'all had asked for. We took in 128 applications during that same time. So we're, some of those just haven't been issued yet, some of them for other reasons just haven't, but it's, you know, a difference of eight, so, but that's that number. And then pre-application meetings, we had 20.
Councilmember Rogers, I believe you were the one that asked the question. Is that, is that what you were looking for?
Yes, ma'am, no problem.
Thank you.
New certificate of occupancy, Kristen Couture, 601 Chestnut Street, Suite Number One. So if you haven't had the chance, go check that place out. Ongoing commercial projects, the Stem and Stone, again, there are a lot of interior work or some, some things still interior, not a lot of work necessarily, but I don't know that they'll meet that August deadline, but we do...
I was going to say, you do realize August is running out this weekend.
Yes, I do. I apologize, but we do anticipate them opening up in, in September. Again, this is Seaton Hospital, they're, they're going along, they have some of the, more of their exterior finishes going up and it's coming along nicely and they're starting to reshape some of their onsite drainage facilities and doing some of that site work. So they're getting prepped to start rocking on that one. This is a 365 mini storage. After this was uploaded, they actually started going vertical, so we do have some vertical construction there at the storage side. They've started in the back and they'll work their way forward. And then the Lost Pines Professional Building, they have a release signed up now, they're rocking along and they now have all their exterior, they're, they're dried in, so they're doing interior work at this point. So that's exciting and we look for them to complete also in September. And one that is on here that I did have a chance to upload, Ramos Demolition at 17 Chestnut Street. They have submitted that demo permit application and we do anticipate that work being completed in the middle of September. Residential projects, no updates here. We haven't approved any new plaits for Piccon Park and or Piney Creek. And then the Preserve Hunter's Crossing again, no, no new COs for that project. Some of the events, we attended the Boards and Commissions Volunteer Fair. We were invited to participate in a Home Builders Association luncheon, where the mayor and city manager and myself attended and got to speak about the codes. Then we also did the Bastrop Building Block Code Technical Manual Review with the developers here at City Hall, which I thought was extremely helpful and I think we all walked away, we walked away with some new information.[1737.87] uh we all walked away, uh, we walked away with some new information. I think they all walked away um informed and uh and pretty pleased uh with the results. So, with that, I'm available for any questions or comments.
Good job, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
You boys do a good job. Any comp questions from Mr. Jones? All right, moving right along, we are at, I'm sorry, we're at 9C, received presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending July 31st, 2019. Ms. Waldron.
Yes, good evening. Um, I will go quick. The report is in your packet. Um, all the economic indicators are positive, except for the Bastrop County unemployment rate. It, it actually rose, which is negative um a little bit. Um, noteworthy, we've, we've kind of beaten this one a little bit, but it was what I thought about when I was doing the report, the designated budget presentation award, we did find out during the month of July, so I added that as noteworthy. On the revenue side, we do have um several funds that are either in warning or ne- negative categories, actual to forecast, um, water, wastewater, uh, the impact fees, we've um touched on each month, the electric cemetery, and also the Hunter's Crossing pit. We have one property owner that got a late, late bill, so once they pay, we'll be uh positive with that fund. Um, but on the expense side, we really only have one fund that is in warning category, so even though we're running behind on our revenue side, we are all positive on the expense side, so. General fund revenues, um, that fund as a whole is net positive almost 7%. Um, we are monitoring each department separately, so as we've mentioned before, we may need to bring back a budget amendment just to um move that money around, but as a whole, it is net positive. Sales tax revenue is um positive almost 3%, uh, so we're running a little above our forecast. Property tax revenue, our forecast is our budget, so we are almost 1% over our budget for this revenue source. Water wastewater fund is almost exactly net neutral revenue to expense. Their revenue is running just slightly above 1% below the forecast, um, so we are continuing to monitor that fund. On the electric fund, uh, they're positive as a whole, almost 2.3%. Uh, the revenue side is running about 2.5% actual um against forecast. Hot fund revenue is 11% as the fund as a whole on the hot occupancy tax revenue. Um, we're almost 8% actual above our forecast, um, but I try to provide you year over year, so we're about 10,000 below where we were last year. And then the legal summaries, if y'all had any questions for me, I'd be happy to entertain.
Good job, Ms. Waldron. The completeness of the package makes it easy to see what's going on, and if we have questions, we have an opportunity to ask you.
I try to include anything that is um noticeably needs to be explained, so.
Absolutely. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Waldron?
Thank you.
Good job. All right, we're moving on. We're at citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody signed up for citizen comments?
No, ma'am.
We are done with citizen comments. We're moving on to the consent agenda. Counsel, does anybody want an item pulled from the consent agenda? Does anyone in the audience want an item pulled from the consent agenda? Madam Secretary, if you'll read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 11A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the August 13th and 14th, 2019, regular meetings. Item 11B, consider action to approve the second reading of Resolution Number R2019-66 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the 921 Main Street Project, repealing of resolutions in conflict, providing severability, and providing an effective date. Item 11C, consider action to approve the second reading of Resolution Number R-2019-67 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas. City approving Roman numeral I, the resolution of the Board of Directors of Bastrop Economic Development Corporation, in parentheses and quotation mark, Corporation, regarding a loan in the amount not to exceed 1,420,000, Roman numeral II, a sales tax remittance agreement between the city and the corporation. Roman numeral III, resolving other matters incident and related to the loan, and Roman numeral IV, the authority of the mayor to execute on behalf of the city a general certificate of the city and the sales tax remittance agreement. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel?
Move to approve.
Ooh, it was a tie. I'm giving it to Councilmember Ennis. Uh, motion from Councilmember Nelson, and, sorry, motion from Mayor Protem Nelson. I do it to him every time. He thinks I'm just mean. And a second from Councilmember Ennis. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The consent agenda is approved. I want to apologize to Ms. Ryan that she stayed for the consent agenda. I apologize. Uh, okay, we're moving on to items for individual consideration. We are on 12A, consider action to approve the second reading of Ordinance 2019-24 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, updating and amending the Bastrop City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 10.02, in title, impact fees, updating the land use assumptions, capital improvement plan, and amending impact fees for water and wastewater utilities as attached in Exhibits A through D, and providing for findings of fact, enactment, enforcement, a repealer, and severability, establishing an effective date, and proper notice and meeting. Ms. Waldron?
Yes. So, at the August 13th meeting, Nugent did a, a pretty comprehensive presentation on the impact report, and um counsel did approve the first reading, and so we're just bringing it back for a second reading. The total impact fee increase between the two wa- between water and wastewater was $1,634.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Waldron?
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion before the vote? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. Counsel, we're now, um, we're gonna walk through, and I just wanna bring to your attention that House Bill 3167 is driving items 12B through 12N, but we've already taken care of 12E. So, um, this is, you, you may or may not have brought with you the summary notes that we had, and we have an updated one as a handout that's, looks very similar to the one that we had before. So, this is the second reading. Um, I also want to note that none of the items are on for public hearing, because they don't have to have a public hearing at both readings, you just have to have one public hearing, and we took care of that at the last council meeting. So, as you walk through all of the items, if you're wondering why we're not having a public hearing, that's why it is not required. So, I am starting with 12B, consider action to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 2019-29 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Exhibit A, zoning ordinance, Article 2, administration, Section 8, planning and zoning commission, subsection 8.4, meetings, to change the November and December Planning and Zoning Commission meeting dates to comply with Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 212, and providing for findings of fact, enactment, enforcement, a repealer, and severability, establishing an effective date, and proper notice and meeting.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion before voting? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Ennis?
Yes.
I mean, Mayor Protem Nelson, sorry.
Still, yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Madam Secretary. It makes, I don't feel all alone tonight. I appreciate that. All right. Mayor Protem Nelson may feel alone, but that's a different meeting. We're moving on to 12C, consider action to approve the second reading of Ordinance 2019-32 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, subdivisions, Article 10.03, subdivision ordinance, Section 1, general, by adding a new section, 1.1, annual adoption of schedule of uniform submittal dates for public improvement plans, and amending Chapter 14 zoning, Section 1, enacting provisions by adding a new section, 6.2, annual adoption of schedule of uniform submittal dates for site plans, zoning changes, and conditional use permits, and adopting schedules of uniform submittal dates for 2019, 2020, for site plans, flats, zoning changes, CUPs, and public improvement plans as shown as Exhibit A, in order to comply with Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 212, which requires flats, site plans, and public improvement plans to be reviewed within 30 days of the submittal or deemed approved, and providing for findings of fact, enactment, enforcement, a repealer, and severability, establishing an effective date, and proper notice and meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson, and a second, um, I think it's Councilmember Jackson. I think he beat you out, Councilmember Rogers. Second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Counsel, I'm going to, are you here for 12Q? No? Are you here for any particular item?
Learning. He's here for learning, he said.
He's here for learning. Okay, great. I just didn't, if you were wanting to leave, I was trying to be respectful of that.
Mayor, I appreciate the role of your own, but I do want to pause just a moment and say a huge thank you to some members of the city attorney's team. Um, as you're well aware, when we brought this to you on August 14th, I indicated to you that um, that it was a work in progress, and these had been vetted conceptually with Allen, but um Robin Miga, Lauren Mueller, and uh Eileen Ewing has spent a tremendous amount of time. We did a video conference, and these ladies worked and went through all of this with copious details and, and wordsmithed it, made sure every i was dotted, every t was crossed, and it's legal, and I would be remiss if I didn't um say to y'all, not only did we do a lot of work, but Allen's team really stepped up to the plate in order to meet this deadline, and I want those ladies to know we appreciate them.
Absolutely. If you will pass that on, city attorney.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. I'll make sure I convey that.
Fantastic. All right, we're moving on to 12D, consider action to approve the second reading of Ordinance 2019-30 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 16, stormwater drainage, Section 16.01.002, 16.01.007, 16.01.009, 16.01.010, 16.01.013, and 16.01.015, by defining stormwater pollution prevention plans and establishing requirements for maintenance plans, erosion control plans, and easements as a part of the construction process for stormwater control, giving the city council the responsibility of approving or disapproving recommendations from the Development Review Committee, and the authority to hear appeals regarding the administration of this chapter, providing for findings of fact, enactment, enforcement, a repealer, and severability, establishing an effective date, proper notice, and meeting.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson. I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. We took care of 12E earlier in the evening, so we are moving on to item 12F, consider action to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 2019-26 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 10.03, subdivision ordinance, Section 2, general, Section 3, purpose, authority, and jurisdiction, Section 4, platting procedure, and Section 5, standard division design requirements, approving a standardized public improvement plan agreement, attached as Attachment A, and providing for findings of fact, enactment, enforcement, a repealer, and severability, establishing an effective date, and proper notice and meeting.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson, and a second from Councilmember Jackson. Matt, did we make the changes that you talked about? I did not get a chance to read through the proposed contract.
In the public improvement plan agreement, it does now include drainage, maintenance, and operations. So, yes, ma'am.
But that's not the part I'm talking about. We talked about the 10% lots, and mainly, we talked about when we set the impact fees.
Yeah, the 10, the 10% is in there. Um, in the draft agreement, it says that the impact fees are set at the time the final plat is filed, um, and it needs to change set at the time of the PIP agreement, um, but that is the...
The, the 10% I'm not sure is in this, because I'm working with Allen to create a warrant, so that they can waive that to change the way that they draw down the lots. And, and so, I had said to the mayor, there are some of this that's gonna be a work in progress, and you'll see it a couple of times. That PIP agreement, mayor, is going to be one of them. But as a result of the, the meeting that we had with developers, um, I have visited with um city attorney Borquez, um, one of the things the law allows us to do is have a waiver provision where a developer chooses to waive the 30-day requirement, but it has to be their choice, and the only way that we can be um, um, secure in knowing that the, the infrastructure that they're investing in um meets our approval is to accept it, and our acceptance is being by way of final plat. If you are a developer slash builder, like KB Homes, that's great, because they can internally finance themselves. If you are a developer that needs to draw down lots from your home builders in order to capitalize your project, you can't function under our plan. So, we have to have a warrant process that will allow them to give us the final plat with no expectation as to file it, so that we can hold it, work through the process with financial security, and then when they do it, file the plat. And Allen and I have conceptually talked about this, but that was last Thursday, and we've not had time to react.
Okay, and so what I'm concerned about is, I don't, if we're collecting the impact fees, because we've decoupled things, and the final plat is so far down, I think it is unfair for a developer to not know what the impact fees are gonna be until the very, very end of the project, because we know the lots are coming, and we've planned for them. So, I think that the impact fee that's adopted, when they're putting their deal together, they oughta know what that fee's gonna be, because it could potentially change three times.
And that's in the PIP agreement is where it's assessed, is it not?
It's in the PIP agreement where it's assessed.
But we don't collect it.
We don't collect it until the time of the building permit.
If it doesn't matter when they have to pay it, it, I think assessing it, if that's the same as when we're setting what the final rate is, I think it is unfair that they don't know for two years what the impact fee's gonna be, because the final plat's so far down, and that was the note. That was what I was...
The note is, the final plat might come two years after...
That's right. And so, I'm gonna challenge back to you, mayor, that part of the, the time period that we're in is that they change every six months. So, do you want them to file in two years before they need it and get a cheaper rate? Or do you wanna wait till the final plat, and we've updated our impact fees twice or three times, and they pay the fee that they need to pay based on when they come in?
I think that it is unfair, if we're trying to be reasonable to do business with, and they're trying to put their finances together, to have no idea what that impact fee is gonna be, is, is an unreasonable burden on, on a large subdivision.
Where would you put it?
Well, so the, and that was the conversation. So, I, I think two years, it's not fair. I can't go to the bank and say, because that's gonna be a big number. I have no idea what it's gonna be.
Would you do it as a part of the preliminary plat?
You could do it at the plat, or you could do it at the sign, the time that the PIP uh agreement is signed, which is memorialized before the final plat and before the construction.
There has to be a point in the deal that we are making an investment, knowing that the lots are coming. There has to be a point in the deal that we are making an investment, knowing that the lots are coming. We know that the money's coming. If we all believe each other, and we're all shaking hands on the deal, then we can't say, "But we're going to change our mind four more times before you pay the fee." I don't think that's fair.
So, are you comfortable with it being?
I'm comfortable with it.
No, no. She's important. Not that you're not. Not that you're not, but she's going to cut the legs out from under all of us if she's not happy of us.
You're important to me, Mr. Jones.
I mean that the way it sounded, but if the mayor ain't happy, mama ain't happy. So, let me just put it that way. So, do we do this at the PIP agreement, which is, which happens before construction ever occurs? So, it's past the preliminary plat. At that point in time, we've got a preliminary plat, we've moved to a final drainage plan, we have an approved set of public improvement documents, and we're fixing to move to construction. At that point, this agreement would be approved, would come to council, and we would lock in the assessment at that point. Is that the right place?
That's, that seems much more reasonable than how it's currently worded, although I'm expecting the city attorney to jump in, because I don't want us to set ourselves up for failure. So, what I had talked to Matt about is, do you set an amount, and it's good for a period of time? And then after a period, because if they go, if they have problems, if they don't take down the lots, and we've invested, then too bad, so sad, buddy, you gotta ante up. So, I'm not saying it should be an opening to checkbook, but they ought to be able to pull their construction, their costs together.
Those are surety fees, and we get those before they get a notice to proceed. What we're talking about are the impact fees that are assessed. So, if they walk away from that development, we have surety fees that will cover the cost of finishing that project. If a building permit's never pulled, technically, there is no impact on the system until it's pulled. And so, if it's a period of time...
It's a risk that we take at the point that we're pulling down the lots.
But what you're saying is, is it's not much of a risk, because if they walk away, we got a surety bond, and we're going to build the subdivision.
And then I'm sure a builder would love to come and build some homes if it's walking into it. And the good thing is, this is also just a template, so it's a very much fluid document that will change per the development, and it's always approved at council. So, this is not something that is administratively done. So, it's always before you.
And you know you're important, right?
I did, until a little bit ago, yeah.
Well, question, could we not set a minimum and a maximum?
On...
On the impact?
Impact fees are what they are.
But I mean, if we're looking to set fees on a project that's not going to go to a plat for two years?
I think Chris Eckrich would tell you legally you can't.
Yes.
So, the answer is no.
The answer is no.
So, do you understand where I am? I'm just, if I'm going to be, if I'm, I want to believe that all developers, I want to believe that the developers that are coming to Bastrop, because of the Bastrop Building Code, are the developers that we want. I don't want to make them have a hurdle that's an artificial hurdle, because we won't tell them what it costs to do business in Bastrop.
Is the surety in that agreement sufficient enough to pay all fees, or just construct the subdivision?
So, we will have already had the construction fees paid before they start construction.
Okay.
The surety covers the cost of construction. If they walk, if they bankrupt, the surety fee covers the cost of the public improvements.
And the builders will pay the impact fees assessed at the time that they pull the permit?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So, Mr. City Attorney, what is the risk at that point? Because the mayor's concerned about that they could sit out there too long before they could potentially expire. And with the scenario he's talking about, we wouldn't let it sit out there that long, because we'd have the money to complete it if it got started, not finished.
I mean, I think the mayor has a point. At some point, we're supposed to be reassessing and updating our impact fees, and at some point, they need to expire, and the new current ones apply. At what point we do that in the process, I think is really our decision.
So, if our process is, is that the preliminary plat is approved, they've gone through, gotten final drainage clearance, they've gone through the public improvement process, and we've approved construction plans, we are now bringing this public improvement agreement back to council, dotting the i's, crossing the t's, posting all the fiscal surety, and all of the insurance necessary to do it. That's where we would put these impact fees in. How long would you have that agreement be good for before we could actually issue a building permit, before they have to come back and renegotiate with council?
I think, I mean, I'm guessing here, based on things I've seen before, you know, no longer than four years, five years? Because remember, for those that are new to this, impact fees are the cost of funding off-site developments, infrastructure, that are necessitated by this new development.
Right.
So, it's not what goes on within the boundaries of that subdivision or neighborhood that's affecting the impact fees. It's changes to your permit at your plant, or something like that. And so, because those numbers are subject to change, I think you wouldn't want to have them frozen for more than a few years.
See, I would even go for like two or three years, and at that point, you come back, and if there's a good reason, and you're making progress, then you can, or if there's been a major change.
Oh, no. Most permits under the law can expire after two years.
If they default on that agreement, is it, is it at that point void, though, and you have an agreement with somebody else?
If they just sit on it, and they could drag this out. So, I think the mayor's point's valid, is we put a two-year expiration, and they just come back and own up to the council where they are. If council wants to extend it, they can. If they don't, the answer's no.
And then we would also know if there, if we've had a major change, and there's a major change in our impact fees, that may change the discussion as well.
Preliminary plats also expire after two years, so that's probably a good timeframe to have.
Councilmember Ennis?
If we're still banner-ing this around, how can we vote on it tonight?
Because the public improvement plan is...
It's a template.
Is a template, and we're not voting on it. We're voting on the stuff around it, but he's going to change his template so that when it comes back to us, we have an agreement. It's like saying it's going to be a kitchen, but we, everybody who does a kitchen's going to come say what kind of appliances they want, what color it's going to be, and all of that. But we're talking about, yeah, there's going to be a kitchen.
Sounds to me like we're making the pie after it's already in the oven.
It's whether you want Cool Whip, or egg yolk, I mean, or egg white meringue.
We're setting the framework, are we not? I mean, that's basically what it is, we're setting the framework.
But it's not finalized documents.
We're going to fill in later on, so I don't think...
You're not adopting a PIP agreement, you're adopting a template for one.
We're just trying to make sure it's as complete a template as it can be.
Yes, ma'am.
And we also have a temporal factor here. We need to adopt the, for the beginning of the fiscal year, do we not?
September 1st, the effective date.
That's beginning of the fiscal year.
October.
October 1st.
A month before the beginning of the fiscal year.
Alrighty. Other, any other comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rogers.
Can I move to approve it?
We already have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Alright. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
No.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
The motion carries 4 to 1. We are moving on to 12G, and Mr. Jones, you are important to all of us.
Yes, yes, you are, Mr. Jones.
Some of us.
12G, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-27 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending ordinance 2019-16, Enhanced Permit Process, Chapter 5, Definitions, and Providing for Findings of Fact, Enactment, Enforcement, or Repealer, and Severability, Establishing an Effective Date, and Proper Notice, and Meeting.
Move to approve. Second?
A motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson, and a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. 2019-27 is approved. We're moving to item 12H. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-28 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Zoning, Exhibit A, Zoning Ordinance, Section 42, Site Development Plan Review, and Providing for Findings of Fact, Enactment, Enforcement, or Repealer, and Severability, Establishing an Effective Date, and Proper Notice, and Meeting.
Okay. I believe, mayor, that the Planning and Zoning Commission had a different recommendation for you to consider the saving on this item.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So, all of the items in Chapter 14, P&amp;Z met prior to y'alls meeting. Y'all passed in the night, so you're aware of that. This is the only item that they had a recommendation on, and it's not different. It is a clarification. In the site development plan, it says it must be prepared by a licensed engineer. They would like to see that changed to a licensed professional. That way, an architect or other design professional could draft those plans. It was probably a carryover from the site development plan when engineering and drainage and everything was a part of that. So, when you decoupled that, the checklist requirements for a site development plan, I think it's appropriate to have a design professional. So, anywhere where it said design, or licensed engineer in the site development plan, it would be their recommendation just to change that to licensed professional.
So, friendly amendment, and that was unanimous with planning and zoning?
Yes, ma'am, it was.
Alright, council, if you'll take that into consideration.
Move to approve as amended.
Alright, I have a motion from Councilmember Jackson to approve 2019-28 with the amendment from, recommendation from planning and zoning, and a second from Councilmember Rogers. Any further discussion? Thank you, Matt and Mr. Jones, and the Planning and Zoning Commission for going over this. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember, Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Jones, you're saying that they didn't have any amendments on any of the other sections, Chapter 14s? Okay, so we're ready to rock and roll. 12I, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance 2019-31 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Zoning, Exhibit A, Zoning Ordinance, Section 32, PD, Plan Development District, repealing conflicting provisions and providing for findings of fact, enactment, enforcement, or repealer, and severability, establishing an effective date, and proper notice, and meeting.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis, and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Y'all are cracking me up. Okay, item 12J, we're on the top of page 5. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-37 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Zoning, Exhibit A, Zoning Ordinance, Section 33, CUP, or C, Conditional Use Permit,
and Providing for Findings of Fact, Enactment, Enforcement, or Repealer, and Severability, Establishing an Effective Date, and Proper Notice, and Meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jackson, and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Jones, planning and zoning was okay with this one. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. 2019-37 is approved. We're moving to item 12K. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-33 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Zoning, Exhibit A, Zoning Ordinance, Section 10, Changes and Amendments to All Zoning Ordinances and Districts and Administrative Procedures, and Providing for Findings of Fact, Enactment, Enforcement, or Repealer, and Severability, Establishing an Effective Date, Proper Notice, and Meeting.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers, and a second from?
Second.
Councilmember Ennis. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. We're on 12L. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-34 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, adopting a Development Manual in Compliance with Chapter 14, Zoning, Exhibit A, Zoning Ordinance, Section 1, Enacting Provisions, Section 6.1, Development Manual, and Chapter 10, Subdivisions, Article 10.03, Subdivision Ordinance, Section 3, Purpose, Authority, and Jurisdiction, as shown as Exhibit A, and Providing for Findings of Fact, Adoption, Enforcement, a repealer, and severability, Establishing an Effective Date, and Proper Notice, and Meeting. Council, this is, was the manual that was downloaded fairly late this afternoon. It was like at around 4 o'clock, so it is in your packet if you pulled up the latest one in the Dropbox. That Development Manual did not write itself. It is an impressive document with a long list of checklists that I know many people spent a tremendous amount of time on it. So, it's going to be the way of the future.
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Peterson?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. We're moving on to item 12M. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-35 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, adopting Construction Standards Technical Manual dated January 2012, amending Chapter 1, Section, did we decide this is 2 or 11? 2, References, Abbreviations, and Definitions, and Adding Street Sign Standards attached in Exhibit A, and Providing for Findings of Fact, Adoption, Enforcement, or Repealer, and Severability,
Establishing an Effective Date, and Proper Notice, and Meeting.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? City Manager, this is part of the manual you guys went over. This is adopting what we've got to get us through.
The Construction Standards Technical Manual only had two changes, and that was to add some additional abbreviations in the abbreviation and definition section, and to adopt the street sign standards. This was actually adopted back in 2012, but the city attorney has advised us that it needs to be adopted by ordinance so that there are enforcement provisions the way the state law has required us to do. So, it was probably adopted in the minutes or by resolution. This formally adopts what we're already doing, so that we can point to it as a legal document as an ordinance.
And we can actually find it when we're looking for it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, City Attorney, for giving us good advice. I have, any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. 2019-35 is approved. I'm on item 12N. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-36 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the City of Bastrop Stormwater Drainage Design Manual,
Section 2, Stormwater Drainage Policy, B, Stormwater Drainage Design Process, and Providing for Findings of Fact, Amendment, Enforcement, or Repealer, and Severability, Establishing an Effective Date, and Proper Notice, and Meeting.
I move to approve.
Motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there anything of note you want to make a comment on?
The only thing I'd like to say is, thank you to the city manager and the staff for getting all of this work done to get us all up to date by September 1st, to be in the ordinance, because I know it was a lot just to read it and listen to it. So, I can imagine how much work there was behind this. I just wanted to put that in that comment.
As staff will tell you, it was damaged brain cells. We didn't have to spare. But yes, it was a lot of work, and this was a real partnership between the city attorney's office and city staff. Allen did a lot of work pulling the information from TML, from the American Planning Association Texas Chapter, as well as the Texas City Attorneys Association, and kind of built a playbook, if you will, on how we did this. And then his team backed up my team, and collectively, we managed to get it done. So, thank you for that. But it was a lot of work by a lot of folks.
I think it's put us in as good or better a position as other towns our size, correct, City Attorney?
I know that cities across the state are all wrestling with this. Anyone who has a building or construction department, I think that some of them are still wrestling with the details. Your team acted very quickly and very thoroughly. Mayor, I think we're ahead of most.
I wanted to say that, but I didn't know that for a fact. But I feel like we're, I don't know what else we could have done. You know, and to the point, it may not all be perfect, but it is our very best effort, and nothing's etched in stone. And if we have found we've made a mistake, we'll make a correction. But at least we've got a game plan, so, because September 1st is just around the corner. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. Council, you'll recall that we've already addressed item 12O. I'm moving on to item 12P. And I know that Ms. Waldron is going to want you to look at, what page am I on?
I have it circled. It's in all caps.
Yep, 656. So, we are on item 12P, conducted public hearing, the first public hearing on the proposed ad valorem tax rate for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Ms. Waldron?
Yes. So, S and O review our assessed values for fiscal tax year 2019, fiscal 2020 are 967,932,907. That is a 7.8% increase over base from the previous year. About 22 million are from new properties. Review of our tax rates this year, the proposed tax rate that we are proposing is .564. Our effective rate calculated out at .5322. The rollback rate was at .5704. And the MNO rate will be .3691. Our debt service rate will be .1949. The MNO rate and the debt service rate are the same rates we had last year, along with the proposed tax rate. I did break out for Councilmember Ennis. The proposed tax rate will generate almost $308,000 more. The proposed tax rate will generate almost $308,000 more revenue than the effective rate would. $124,000 of that is from new property, but $183,000 is all we're getting from the same properties from the previous year.
Thank you, Ms. Waldron. So, I am opening the public hearing. And I want to open it with stating that the City of Bastrop will vote on the tax rate on September 24th, 2019, at 6:30 PM at City Hall, 1311 Chestnut Street, Bastrop, Texas, 78602. And I am officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, mayor.
I am officially closing the public hearing. And that's all we needed to do, correct? Alright. Moving on to 12Q. Consider action to approve resolution number R2019-75 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, consenting to the creation of Bastrop County Municipal Utility District Number 2, repealing all resolutions in conflict... Conflict! Providing severability and providing an effective date. Mr. Joe?
Thank you, mayor and council. Somebody who's been here for a while may be familiar with this, but this is Bastrop County Utility District Number 1, sorry, or 2, aka Double Eagle Ranch, if somebody may recognize that name. Sorry, I'm stumbling over myself here. So, when we pass this resolution tonight, basically what you're going to do is give consent, and then we will come back and negotiate a deal that it will expire. If we do not get that negotiated by February 29th, leap year this year, 2020, and we will start over. But in the meantime, the fees that you adopted tonight, we'll take care of this. They'll come into the agreement. They'll pay the new fees, and we'll move forward, and we'll work until February of 2020 to get this done. And establishing, basically, the regulations that we want to see in that mud agreement, which may be the drainage regulations, and stuff that protects the health and safety of the City of Bastrop.
Okay, council, any questions for Mr. Joe? Where is this?
It's about seven and a half miles outside of town, west, towards Austin.
Yeah, and it's north of 71.
So, it's an aquas, yes. We won't serve utilities, but we will regulate what we'd like to see as far as maybe the city's drainage regulations, because they are upstream from us, and we want to make sure all that gets written into the agreement.
It's upstream, we have interest. So, when... Oh, go ahead. I was going to say, after, once we approve this, we still get to see the deal when it comes back, is that what you...
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, tonight is just granting consent, so they can elect their board.
Okay, thank you.
Move for approval, then, in that case?
I have a motion to approve from councilmember Jackson?
Second.
And a second from councilmember Rogers. Any further discussion?